The county board of county commissioners will come to order. Let the record show that today is July 17th, the time is 9:00 AM. Mr. Winkie.
Yes.
Would you do the honor in leading us in the pledge of allegiance, sir? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every公正 and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Nice to have the municipality power structure in place. Welcome. Madam Clerk, the board would conduct the roll, please.
Mr. Flowers.
Present.
Mr. Candy.
Here.
Mr. Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Campy present.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Mr. Haplen, would you like to begin with the audience introduction, sir?
Be loud and slow, because Kelly's new. She wasn't here last time.
Mike Haplen, Wetmore.
Frank Harden, Wetmore.
Man Davenport, Wetmore.
Jackie Buebers from Sudden.
Steve Lathwell, Mayor Silvercliff.
Paul Winkie, Mayor Westcliff.
Josh Far, Wetmore.
Alvin Gray, Wetmore.
Fred Smith, Wetmore.
Anne Hayward, Wetmore.
Vivian Moffles, Custer County.
Henry Flower, Westcliff.
Barbara Hayne, Wetmore.
Nora Hope, Wetmore.
Welcome. Nice to have you guys here. Appreciate it.
Shannon Byerly.
Community. And of course, Mr. Byerly, he was way more interested in coffee than he was in introductions. Amendments to the agenda, gentlemen?
I'm here.
I've got a couple I want to run by you and see what you think. Ken, I thought you and I had a conversation about the possibility of adding a workshop date for broadband.
Yeah, but I thought we were going to discuss that when we talked to the municipalities.
Okay.
You didn't think it needed an agenda. Your choice. We need to insert it right after them, so to say.
Okay. Where are they at on this agenda?
First, we're going to discuss the Senator Gardner's case.
Oh, that, okay. They're not here for broadband?
No, they're here for that, and then we'll discuss. That was an opportunity, since they're here, we'll discuss a time that we can all get together for broadband workshop.
Okay.
If you want to insert it.
They had to get up pretty early.
You did, yeah. Take it all the way down here. Certainly would have been earlier than that.
That's what I told them we would do.
Counsel, what do you think about that? Can we just informally have that discussion about a workshop?
Date, a date to get together with the town.
Sure, oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right, then that's fine, I'll allow that. The other thing I... I'm trying to decide whether... I'm considering asking, gentlemen, to change our agenda and move the consideration of hiring the director for the OEM as the first item, so that would give our human resource person time to see if we can get confirmation, and then we can act on that before the meeting is over.
No.
Shouldn't. So with, I would move that we amend the agenda today to move consideration of hiring the director for OEM to the first item under new business. The movement second to change the agenda as mentioned, moving consideration of hiring director of OEM to the first item of business discussion about that.
Okay, Paul and Steve. I'm good.
Okay, thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hosne, Kerry. Just a second to make that correction. Oh, I'm just cutting page. All right, I'll just cut the page. No big deal.
Control C.
Oh, yeah.
It's a good thing she came.
Yeah.
We'd be here all afternoon. But we may be anyway.
You're usually all here.
Yeah.
I don't think it might be a short agenda, but you guys have a...
We started off with a short one.
No reason to change things now, if there. So I have Resolution 1907 now as the last item, is that?
Yes.
Concur. Okay, thank you. Any further amendments to the agenda? Okay, no. Do I approve the minutes? I don't believe we have any.
We do.
We have a little.
Couple of them.
In fact, we got to 28th a couple times.
I don't understand why that's due.
The 28th, I thought you said you'd do at the...
Yeah, Kelly sent out an email with four different ones, the ones that are in the package.
The 17th, the 28th, and the 23rd.
Okay, they weren't in the package.
I didn't.
Correct, because I didn't get them. My email gave them.
Okay, so, yes, sir.
I'll move that we approve the minutes for July 2nd, 3rd, 19th, and 28th.
Oh, second day.
I've got, hang on a second, I'm sorry. July 2nd, July 3rd, June 19th, June 28th.
Second, sorry, thank you.
Sir, in the second stands. You seconded that?
Yeah, yeah, let's mention again, yeah.
Remember we were saying to approve the minutes from July 2, 3, 19, sorry, June 19 and June 28th. Discussion. Yes, I do have.
Well done, I appreciate it.
With your patience, I've not seen those that got by me, so...
Move it to the next meeting?
If you'll give me a minute to find them. Do you have a date, sir? Thank you, ma'am.
You can use the old fashioned.
All right. Do you have a date for when they were sent? And they came from you, Ms. Kelly?
Yes, yesterday morning.
Oh, yesterday? Oh, yeah. Not.
They sent the 17th, actually, before the 28th.
Yeah, you did.
And I sent it to you yesterday.
16th at 6:20 PM.
That was probably maybe 40 minutes.
Oh, okay, all right. I'm just checking to see if I have them from yesterday. 16th.
Yeah, this thing is still going on. Go ahead and do it. If you see something else, you can amend it later.
The one thing I wanted you guys to look at was the upper arc, upper area, upper arc area.
They are now...
That five-year strategic plan. That was on the third.
Yeah, we have a meeting right now.
Well, obviously, I haven't read them, so I'm lost in what you're talking about right now.
That was that when Charles Bogum came in and gave that report.
Oh, not, okay. Upper Arc Council of Government, I was thinking of Water Conservation Board, sorry.
I think I would like to recommend that I withdraw my motion, and then we'll just postpone on the next one.
I'll look, if we don't, I'll abstain.
Well, I'd rather we all had a chance to look.
Is the second one going?
I'll withdraw.
Okay, the motion to approve the minutes of July 2nd, 3rd, June 19, 28 have been withdrawn. Would you like to postpone that to the next meeting, sir?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that. I'll take that as form of the motion.
No, that we postpone it to the next meeting. I don't have the date in front of me.
Okay, 31st, July 31st. The movement second to postpone approval of these four minutes until the next meeting, July 31st. Discussion. Hearing no, proceed to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, Hosne, Kerry. Thank you. I'm sorry, I just do not have them, that's... I know I didn't have them in the, in the board package, so... We will move on. Commissioner Candy, would you like to begin, sir?
Okay. Couple things, pretty significant importance. We've had a weekly activity report from Riley Johnson of Justice Center, and he did get Shannon and the other departments, the space requirements, Doc, if you can. And then we also sent him the topo, the kit got back together for both hard copy and the soft copy. Only issue is the soft copy, well, both copies don't have the rights-of-way on the particular one, so he had to, they're making calls to JD on that, the Round Mountain water, the electric, to figure out, somebody must have some kind of an idea where those rights-of-way go through the piece of ground, so we're working on that.
Just as a side note, real quick, I did talk to, around Mountain, they have abandoned that water line that went diagonally across.
Well, that's good news.
It's still in place.
Is it alive?
It's in place, it's abandoned.
It's dead, though. Okay, I'll point that out. And we don't know where, that any other rights-of-ways are yet, as far as...
And that's what they wanted, huh?
I'd be surprised if they find it anymore.
We'll see what they got. Okay, so that's one issue. Strategic plan that we did with Cheryl Trent, I can't remember the date we said we'd get together, but it's coming up, and before that, we probably ought to have a look, see, a discussion on where we stand. I know there were a couple things that people were going to try to do upfront, but we've got to get the wheels in motion and make sure that we're checking and tracking against what the community and we all agreed to do. I'll bring that up as an agenda item next week, or the next, one of the next two weeks. The Upper Arc Council of Governments, strategic five-year broadband plan update, I attended that meeting, as you recall, last week over in Salida, and made it clear that, I hadn't, I'm new there, I hadn't been involved in the Council of Governments. Paul, I know you are, glad you're here, I asked him for a attendee list or whatever that says who are the membership of the board, so we know exactly who's there representing the county. And I made it clear that the county commissioners, as you know, are speaking for the county, not economic development corporations or other people. In the past, we haven't appointed anybody, we may do that in future. I am? You did, yeah.
Jason?
I know Jason, Jason represented that. But he, on this particular meeting, if we hadn't gone, there was just Vogel representing Custer County as an example. So we want to be cage, that's all.
They came to us this month, this month?
Yeah.
They asked us for two people, and we appointed...
Right, they asked for what they called stakeholder.
Yeah.
And so we, I guess Buck Winslow is one of them, and I'm also representing us right now.
Right, and we appointed two people, myself, the best hold.
Okay, there we have it. Right, and they're going to be here Friday, he, the strategic plan guy, and he's going to be all day in the town hall, is what I understand, and we can come and go as people prefer.
Right.
Not in the way.
Right, and anybody who can't make it on that day will be interviewed by telephone.
Right. And all that is, it looked pretty simple, five years ago they came up with a plan, some things have happened, it's, the only issue I had was if we have independent things we're doing to couple together. What we wanted to avoid was the effect of having something that we are committing to from a corporation point of view, if you wanted to look at, and we have a whole council of governments, that would drive us to spend money, you know, and we can't do that. We've got to coordinate things together and grow together, not, not, sort of like the UN, the UN's not in charge, neither is the Council of Governments. So I thought it was a pretty good meeting. Then the, we'll talk about this later, Cory Gardner, Kathy Garcia had asked for us to sponsor or host that visit. I sent everybody out a note on that. And Paul, I didn't get back to you, did you find your, your message on what was going on, when I emailed to you?
Yes.
Okay, so, so we'll be talking about that later here in a few minutes, about how we'll handle all that, go through that, reiterate that email, and then talk about it. And then also, there is a, just as an announcement to make, reminder from a water point of view, there is a water study briefing that the USGS is going to give on the 24th at 10:00 at Ranchers Route. There's a press release that'll go out for that to invite the whole valley to understand what that study is. This is a result of our Blue Line Committee meeting that the Wet Mountain Valley Water Users Association had with them. And so that'll be in the paper, and everybody here, if you have best interest in water and want to learn about what the resources we have, this is a very good briefing. And then finally, we worked the OEM interviews last week, or last night, I should say, and we're going to finish up on that today.
Great.
Thanks.
Commissioner Prince?
Thanks, sir.
You bet.
Been busy since last meeting. On the 8th, I attended a Beckwith Ranch meeting, a friend of Beckwith Ranch, we're looking to do some improvements. The family that donated the ranch to us would like to have a caretaker on site. Unfortunately, the agreement that the county originally had with friends of Beckwith actually had a statement saying that there'll be no living quarters on the ranch. So I recommend that at this point that they go to Ms. Hobby, Jackie Hobby, and go through planning and zoning to see if that's something that potentially planning and zoning may wish to change or amend to use a special use permit, and if it does, they will make their representative, the three of us, and we can decide whether we want to do it or not. On the 9th, I attended a very long tourism meeting. And I'm just feeling, they have it wrapped together at the moment, they have lots of things going on, lots of programs that are coming up. There was a time when we had a concern about power struggles and other issues going on with that board, and I feel so much better about it right now, this was congenial and very well done. Because I attended the Upper Arkansas Water Conservation District on July 11th in Salida, received a tongue-lashing as is Commissioner Flower. There is a change in personnel there, and hopefully there'll be a change in attitude towards their work with Custer County on that.
Contemptious, I didn't know.
Sir?
What, they had a problem, did they?
No, the outgoing chair was very critical about the way I was vocal about how they handled their process. Process diplomatically. On the 15th, we met with AMR, the company that runs an ambulance service, Scott Lynn is the regional vice president. This all stems from, we'll have more discussion as we go on today, and then there's a workshop later today, stems from the totally unacceptable situation where folks at Wetmore may die on 911 and not get help, and that is totally unacceptable. The three of us are very, very in tune with that, and we'll do whatever it takes to make sure that, I'm sticking with myself, but I know they feel the same way, that is untenable, and we will do whatever is right to make sure that every person in the county, when they die on 911, somebody's on their way to help. And then of course, yesterday, we, we spent the afternoon interviewing candidates for the OEM job. We had seven applicants, we interviewed four, and we'll see how that goes, since it's on the agenda this morning. I didn't do anything.
I think it's been boring.
Has been boring since then.
On July 11th, I also attended the Upper Arkansas Water Conservation District meeting in Salida, as did Commissioner Prince, certainly echo your comments. We took a verbal railing from one former chair commissioner, Mr. Cinderhoff, who obviously is displeased with the position that the commissioners, myself, and particularly have taken on the stand of the filing of CWF 3076 augmentation plan. Granted and raved for 27 minutes as a former chair of the Upper Arkansas Water Conservation District, which includes all or parts of four counties, and primarily limited his remarks to Custer County. I tried not to get offended by that, but I'm as human as anybody else. So... It was watering the bridge now, we sit there and took our weapon and kept quiet. I will tell you that Commissioner Candy was highly praised from Mr. Cinderhoff, it's on the record, but didn't have much good to say about anybody else on the commission. So, glad to get out of that meeting. Last Saturday, 13th, I participated in the cleanup day out at the fairgrounds, my grandchildren are involved, so I thought I would go out and help, and it's fun, you had a lot of kids out there, and I really wasn't there as a commissioner, but it's hard to separate yourself, and several people complimented me for being there. July 15th, attended a meeting with Scott Lynn, along with Commissioner Prince from AMR, as he mentioned, had a meaningful, thoughtful conversation about the corporation of, or the company of AMR, which is a subsidiary of Global Medical Group, GMR, or GMG, sorry. So, again, that, as Commissioner Prince pointed out, obviously, we'll move forward with some discussions today. And then on the 16th, I also attended the OEM interviews yesterday, and felt like that was a productive time, so we will hopefully move forward with that. That's kind of my calendar thing. Resolution 1907 is on the agenda today, I had that to discuss under Commissioner Items. We need to revisit that, which we will do today in some fashion, but we just weren't aware at the time when we made the motion to receive the money from the land sale into the general fund, that that's not actually correct according to statute, so we'll make that correction today. I also wanted to give a report on the HVAC units, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning here in this building. We certainly are having issues with those today, thank goodness. The one down here is working, the one upstairs is not, the one that runs the upstairs, cools the upstairs portion, this building is not. Mr. Spar called me last week, said they were having trouble, we contacted an HVAC guy, and he came down, reported back to Meredith and myself that we're in some trouble down here.
Is that an old one, and they didn't upgrade it?
No, they're brand new, not brand new, they went in with the remodeled building.
So are they under warranty or not?
Michael Theme was going to check into that, he believes that they are, obviously it would be parts only, not labor, but he thinks one leg of the compressor's probably gone down, they were not resettable breakers, so he thinks we've got a breaker issue. Of course, I said, you know, what kind of money we're talking about, and he said, without pulling all the numbers and getting all the parts, prices, he said it's hard, probably four, five, six thousand bucks. If the parts are under warranty, then some of that, you know, would be reduced, hopefully. Right away, I wanted to find out who in hell built this place and go back to them. There's some other issues, the vent pipes for HVAC were installed correctly using material that was outlawed four, five years ago, so I don't know about all that, but we'll have to probably research that a little more, I've got that big notebook, I actually took it down in the basement of construction docks for this project, so we may have to go back even and see what the specs were for the vent stacks. Who knows where we'll, where all that will shake out, but we are working on it. I went in there this morning and looked, it appears that that whole thing has dried up. We had freestanding water in the bottom of one of the plenums of the AC unit. Yes, sir, Mr. Mike?
As long as we're talking air conditioning, the update on the air conditioning?
Checked on that this morning before I left, of course, got there a little before 8:00 and had to get down here, so I didn't have an opportunity to really research that, but I looked at Meredith to see, number one, did, do you know?
I don't know if I'm okay or not.
Because the AC unit was not working this morning.
Right, so I brought, sticking up with both numbers, so I could call him while I was...
Thank you. And I've always believed, I never had cell phone service down here, but your phone rang, so you must have been off the wireless.
If you're connected to the Wi-Fi.
Oh, yeah, I have a hot slot, and so, so, yeah, if we need to follow up on that, you're welcome to do that whenever you think it's appropriate, but, yeah, we're having trouble, I don't know if that unit froze up up on the roof, or what the deal was, we were told we'd have a HVAC guy there yesterday afternoon, from the appearances, that didn't happen. We were in meetings, so I have no idea, but they didn't have any AC today up there in the courthouse, so... And then I just wanted to throw quickly out the progress on two projects, one was the public health office that we relocated into recently, I think now, with, maybe the exception of just a little bit of touch-up, that entire quote-unquote "construction" project is done. We need to fill in a little bit of a gap around that overhead door, you can still see some daylight through there, and typically our wind and water comes from the southwest, and that door faces south, so we did not carpet that room in there, that storage room, we repainted it, but we didn't carpet it, part of it was for that reason, so... But other than that, I got the seating tiles cut in and cut around those vents, and so I think that all is pretty well done now, so they're very excited about that. And then the VSO project, we put that privacy wall in there, it took second seat to the public health thing, because we had a deadline to meet there, so we're back on that. Chris, Vogel, our maintenance person, has painted those walls, both sides, second coated and touched them up, and I'll trim out, install the window and trim out around the door and that window, so we'll get that done. And food for thought, I'm just wondering if maybe we, as commission, I'll probably bring it up for consideration to disallow other groups to meet in that building, and leave that for county use only.
VSO?
Yeah, no. Because now, the problem's going to be with that privacy wall, it created, and the unintended consequence was if there's a, the waiting room now becomes what is the meeting room, and before they could have kind of gone around and sit in the old kitchen part, but that's probably not going to happen now, because that's why we put the wall in, to separate that. I don't know, I know 4H uses that, Central Committee, Republican Central Committee uses it.
No, I've not.
As I found out on Fridays, there's another part of the court system that meets in there, I think, who does. Do you watch?
If I may, since, since that building, since we've been using that building, Westcliff has been tremendously generous in allowing the public and the different organizations to use meeting rooms there. Westcliff has a meeting room upstairs and a huge downstairs, and, well, I certainly cannot speak for them, and the mayor's here, maybe he'd speak for it, but as long as we're not displacing an organization that doesn't have a place to meet, I'm just throwing out that as a viable option, if the town of Westcliff agrees.
Okay. The limiting factors, I understand, are night meetings, is that correct? I think it's an issue to get in there in the evenings, but... I think it's an issue to get in there in the evenings, but...
Tom?
Yes?
When they started allowing people to meet in the OEM building, they said...
VSO?
VSO.
VSO, yeah. They said evening only also, so that you wouldn't conflict with anything...
Business, yeah.
So, evening starts at, what, four o'clock?
I'm assuming it's all about closing business in the courthouse. The other thing I thought I would do, since Mayor Laswell is here, who I also know sits on the attainable housing board, is if you would stand for a question or two about that. I know it's a little off the rails, but the attainable housing received a $40,000 grant from Elk-Tamar. I guess I would like confirmation on what I've been told unofficially. Has anything been done specifically with that money yet?
None of that money has been spent. The direction we're going in is what we had talked about previously of possibly purchasing a number of lots in Silver Cliff that are owned by Colorado College. We specifically set up two face-to-face meetings with Colorado College, both of which they got busy and put us off. So, the latest thing we've done is we've sent them a letter with a proposal for purchasing that property at well below market value, and we received a response that they'd be considering that this week.
Oh, good.
So, that's where we stand.
All right. Great update. Thank you. I appreciate that. I spoke with one of the members of the Board of Directors for Elk-Tamar last week, and he specifically asked me what was going on, and I said, "I missed the last attainable housing meeting. I know there was some activity, but I couldn't tell him what it was." Charles Vogel reached out to me about an email from my initial contact with Colorado College. Still sounds like progress.
Yes, and then Elk-Tamar has notified us that they're having a meeting in Buena Vista on the 29th of August, where they're going to call together all of the counties that they gave money to and get a report on where each one stands.
Nice. The director I spoke to almost proudly said that Elk-Tamar almost looks at Custer County as kind of taking the lead on some innovative approaches. They're really, really going to be interested to see how we spend that money, when it comes right down to it.
Yeah, the other thing is, we're the smallest county, so to speak, so they feel that their $40,000 will have a much bigger effect on our county than on the others.
Right. Yeah. And that meeting's going to be where, you could say, from the 29th?
Buena Vista.
You don't know the time?
No, they didn't stipulate the 29th of August. I'm going to be out of the country at that time, but Charles Vogel indicated that he could attend.
I would attend also. Just happened to tell Charles to include me in that, in that string. Very good. I see we have some other housing going on in Silver Cliff. You care to comment on any of that or not?
Sure.
Is that attainable housing directed or...?
It's not attainable housing directed, but it is their intent to keep the housing that's going to be built there in the, I guess you'd call it, the upper portion of the attainable range. So, they're affordable for some, but not for all, but they're not, they're not real expensive.
I'm glad I asked, because I was told specifically those were designed to be attainable housing units in Silver Cliff, so I guess to some fashion...
Oh, it's a family that got the money.
Yeah, anything's attainable if you have the right amount of money, that's true. Which I still would challenge the attainable housing committee to come up with a precise number to say in Custer County, especially after this new housing study come out, that this dollar figure, in our opinion, represents attainable housing, and anything above that doesn't. And I know they're looking at 30% of AMI, but...
Yeah, the other range is like affordable housing.
Yeah, there's multiple ranges higher, so that you're tracking first.
And the housing study talks about that. So, I appreciate it. Thank you, sir. That's all I have, gentlemen. Anything else?
Yeah, I forgot a couple things. I wanted to thank you, Tom, because, and I don't, everybody knows it, he mentioned the wall, the clinic, and all the other things, the plumbing. Tom Dunn, and thanks for saving the county a bunch of dough.
I agree.
Really, really has been good. Which gets me to ask, are you going to cut the weeds in the Justice Center too?
I already did.
Did you do it?
I cut the weeds I felt like needed to be cut.
That's a recreation, too, if you get outside.
He also welded all the valances on top of the Conex billets for us to set that new roof.
Yep, he did that, too, for the groner.
Thank you.
It was a time of...
Thank you.
Appreciate this.
Oh, there is a town ordinance?
We will cut it if you're doing it.
Ah, we should have waited another five minutes. Oh, they bill us. They bill us for it.
You should be getting a little...
Good thing we got there.
So, I'm assuming the town also has an ordinance. They will not tolerate prairie dogs, and at their own expense will take care of those, correct?
On public, on city land, yes.
But not the, not the Justice Center?
We do have a multi-organization, West Cliff Civic of the county. We authorize the eradication of those predators. So, I don't know what the status of that is, but we do have a...
Trust me, I can give you the status of that, because I witnessed it personally. Not the eradication, but I had to drive over all those holes when I was mowing the Justice Center.
Yeah, I know.
I'm telling you, it's a bone crusher now. There were a lot of big holes out in that property, but I did not, I did not mow all of it. I went in and mowed a lot of the tumbling mustard and the stuff that needed to be mowed. And I did not see an active prairie dog hole anywhere in that property.
Excellent.
So, it looks like they were very effective in eradicating those. I didn't go on to the property adjoining to the east. I don't know about that. That was, did Hegas, were they involved in that?
Yes.
Effort, too?
Yes.
As private landowners?
Yeah.
East, yeah. So, good. So, it looked very effective to me. It was just rough out there. Their idea, obviously, they put gas in those holes and then shoveled dirt in to seal them up, but there were still a lot of big swales in there. But I think the prairie dog thing is, I'm convinced, taken care of on our property anyway. A foot, is that correct?
One foot.
Vegetation a foot high on a year like this.
That's every three weeks, every two weeks?
Pardon?
We get in a lot of sun.
Oh, I don't know. Address that to Commissioner Kanda, would you please? I'm still not walking correct after mowing the part of the...
Six inches in Silver Cliff.
Good. There's grass that's six inches long growing out of the cracks in our pickleball court. Surely, you know, I haven't even been up there. I'm just...
That's not a firehead.
Oh, because that's concrete, right? Yeah. Anything else, gentlemen? Thanks, Mr. Kanda, for bringing that up. Appreciate it. Not why I do it, but thank you. Upper Ark, I spoke about it in my report. Anything else? And you mentioned the upcoming USG, yeah?
I have a question.
Yes?
Are they willing to negotiate with us?
No.
Interesting.
They've made that very clear.
Thank you.
Concerning the augmentation plan, I'm assuming you're asking. And if you do not know, I just throw this out again. Mike Shields is the new county representative on Upper Ark, replacing Bob Cinderhoff. Attorney items? And then I might have to entertain a break, because we could get outnumbered with this big crowd and come up with nothing back there for snack.
I got you.
Ooh. Talking about, yes, sir. Attorney items?
I attended the meeting this past Monday with Representative from AMR to discuss the ambulance issue. I was present yesterday for the interviews for the position of Director of the Office of Emergency Management. Last week, Virginia Truitt, the county treasurer, talked to me about that resolution. The county sold 11 lots, vacant lots that the county had owned for many, many years, at least 30 years, probably much longer. And we sold them for $1,000 apiece, so it was an $11,000 payment to the county. We had Resolution 19-06 that said that money would go toward the Justice Center, but Virginia Truitt pointed out to me that there is a provision that that money has to be used differently. I'll talk about it in more detail when we get to the resolution, but I did go ahead and prepare a proposed Resolution 19-07 that's on the agenda today. Virginia also, and I guess I can talk about this, but she felt that it was necessary to have either title insurance or an ONE, ownership and encumbrance, reported on that property. I'm not quite sure why, but I went and talked to the new title insurance company in Tom Arbrenda works, and Arbrenda was on vacation, and I, and I'll report on that in more detail. I talked to another person there about doing that. Because of this ambulance issue, I needed to try to find out what the history was of the ambulance service in Custer County. And I want to thank Kelly, our county clerk and recorder, because she went through her records and provided me with a lot of documentation that was very, very helpful in figuring out the progression of events, how we came from a volunteer ambulance service to where we're at now, one that's paid employees and the funds are being handled by the West Custer County Hospital District, and we'll go into that. That's an agenda item as well. I think the only other thing, you'd asked me to write a letter to a couple of gentlemen for a century of length to explain why the county was refusing to pay that service charge, and you were going to give me an address for the two. You get, Tom, you got me an address for one, but not the other, but I'm guessing the address is probably the same address. It's a business address, so I'll just go ahead and get those letters sent out. And I took a four-day motorcycle trip down to southwest Texas, learned that you can't get a permanent tan, you can just rent one, because now I'm using some of the tan that I got, but it was a good trip.
Well, good.
Did you represent us in any formal capacity in any establishments on that trip, sir?
I disavow any knowledge or any connection all of you guys. Tried to keep that low profile as I can.
Thank you. We are eternally grateful for that.
But I will report sadly, so many small towns in Texas are dying on. In fact, it was hard to find open gas stations in some of those places. All the gas stations were closed. Anyway, that's all I have for attorney items.
All right, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. Gentlemen, with your indulgence, there are a couple items I overlooked. I was contacted yesterday about a pending meeting of water augmentation plan opposers to meet at the Cliff Lanes Friday at 7:30 in the morning. So, if you're interested in that, a couple of the opposers contacted me, yes, contacted me yesterday and asked if I or any of the commissioners were interested in attending that, and so I told them I would be there and that I would mention it today, so...
What time?
bear with me, I think the process will become clearer. I'm going to move that we go into an executive session this afternoon for personnel issue. And that executive session will be held in the commissioners' room in the courthouse as an extension of this meeting, rather than adjourn this meeting. I think the proper format, if the motion carries, will be to take a recess until, stand in recess until such time as we reconvene in Custer County, or in West Cliff, sorry. Is there a second?
I'll say.
The lunatic scheduled an executive session this afternoon, hopefully prior to four o'clock, but who knows, because we have no idea how long that work session's going to go. Discussion, hearing number, see the votes. Own a favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose name. Carried. I will notify... Yes, sir. An executive session up in Custer County, up in West Cliff, sorry, up in, this afternoon to deal with an employee issue, yes, sir. Yeah, and I will contact that employee via email. Obviously, with employee issues in executive session, the employee has the prerogative of choosing to have that hearing, or whatever you want to call that, in the public meeting or in a private executive session, and I will offer that opportunity as well.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay. Admin assistant?
We got word that we got the landfill grant for the skid steer, so...
Really? Were you considering?
Yeah, so we got a letter back in May that if additional funding would be available, we would get back funding, and usually that's a nice way of saying, thanks, but no. And then...
Will you tell them the amount?
Yeah, $37.5. And so, we got the full amount that we requested, and so, working on the, waiting for the contract to come in, we'll get that squared away and signed. Yeah, so now we, the landfill will have to borrow Ronan Bridge's skid steer, and it'll be a better system.
Yeah, that grant was written specifically for the purchase of a skid steer at the landfill through Department of Local Affairs, so...
Carter, Department of Public Health, yeah.
I apologize, Dr. Wright, CDPH.
Yeah, and that's it.
So, a huge win for the landfill out there. And then, if I can dovetail a little bit on the landfill, I'm sorry, I should have had all these notes written down. I'm sure we all received a copy of the report on the landfill, on the permitting process that they're, they're ready to move forward with that, so at some point, we'll get that on the agenda. We'll get Rusty to get that on the agenda, and I read through some of it, so... Okay, anything else, ma'am?
No. Can you put that on the first part of next month's agenda?
Yeah, for his staff report, during his staff report. Be outstanding, thank you. We're going to have two public comment sessions in our meeting today, as we do every meeting, one now and one towards the end, so we'll move into public comment if you have anything you'd like to discuss or with, or ask questions of the commissioners. Now would be the time to do that. If it is, let me interrupt you real quick, sir. If it's not already on the agenda, if it's on the agenda, then we'll deal with it, and if it's not, we're welcome to talk about it. Yes?
I just wanted to thank Commissioner Kanda for getting us a couple of handicap spots painted out here. Jerry Hyde came down, and he, he had nothing to work with except off his telephone, and he hand printed and painted those things.
Wow. Thank you.
Thank you for saying so. I'll make sure he knows that you, he made a big impression, literally.
We do have stencils for those handicap placards, but if I'd have known he was coming down, we'd got him. We just, we're dealing with repainting ours up there at the courthouse, maybe as we speak, so, yeah, good job for following up on that. Anything else? Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, I was wondering more about the air conditioning in here. If you could go through it so I understand it better and jump to our position. First of all, I know you kind of went a little bit. The unit itself went down.
Yes.
Something wrong with the unit, therefore, it called for more electricity, which the breakers couldn't handle, and electricity come through and burn the wires. Okay. The unit should be under warranty for what, like five years?
Three to five is standard on HVAC, yes, ma'am.
Well, who keeps all the warranties, too?
We've got them on record in courthouse, in the file cabinet.
Because that should be there.
Yeah.
And the wiring, was that not redone for the unit upstairs?
Yeah.
So, that's all new wiring to the breaker box? And then the breaker box did not work?
Yeah, let me, from memory, try to relay the information I was giving. I also asked for that information hard copy, so I could answer these questions specifically today. I did not get that. I did not get that. For some reason, don't, we haven't established the cause, but for some reason, obviously, that, you're right, that HVAC unit went down. The breakers should have been resettable breakers, for lack of a better term. They should have blown earlier than they did. That's what caused one, one of the issues with the breakers, that they malfunctioned. And then that, I, this is all speculation so far, because we haven't done all the diagnostic stuff, but it appears to the HVAC guy then that that caused one leg of the compressor to get burned out. I'm sure it's a 220 single-phase compressor. And so, then that ended up causing the water issue, and things kind of snowballed from there. I can't tell you exactly what happened, because our technician doesn't even know. He just came down and did a cursory look to see what the problem was, and he said, we've got more than one problem. One, it was a chain event thing, and so I don't, I can't answer all of that, but that's basically my understanding. I was told that the water in the plenum had gotten to the point where it overflowed and seeped under the wall back here and got out into the tile and was lifting the tile. I looked at that, you could see that there's a little bit of unevening. The tile back there doesn't look as smooth as this tile. So obviously, there's been some water damage back there, too. The warranty, it's hard to say without looking. I have not had the opportunity to go through all those documents. We got a notebook about that thick. But typically on HVAC stuff, three to five years, parts only, labor's not included. So, Michael Feen told me, in his opinion, the wrong breakers were installed. That's what caused the problem initially. And then, everything else was a result of that.
Wouldn't the inspector be liable for that? Because he should have checked. He should have checked.
Probably not compared to the contractor, the subcontractor that did that work. It should go back onto them.
Would it go to them?
It's our intent, I believe, as commissioners.
Why did the inspector sign it off?
Pardon me?
Why did the inspector sign it off if it wasn't right?
There could be a question here, and this is probably what an inspector would tell you, that I inspected those breakers and they were legal breakers. And they were put in according to the specs on the contract. Whether they were the right breakers or not, it would be the big question.
So that's how they'll wriggle out?
Well, the disconnect breakers for each HVAC unit would be separate.
So that's how they would wriggle out or be liable for any?
I would guess that would be right. I mean, nobody's going to want to man up and own this, I can tell you that, because it's going to be some money. But we go back to the warranties, start there, and then go back to the installer, make a run of them, probably not successfully, but because it's easy for them to claim three years later, Lord knows what's gone on in there. But, and if they were installed at the minimum of the specs, then they're off the hook anyway. Yes, sir.
During the construction, the remodel of the building, many issues came up as to whether it was done properly or not. I believe you were part of a lot of those discussions. It's time we go back to the contractor. He would say, I just did what is on the plans. So ultimately, I believe, and it's really going to be a question for counsel, I believe it's going to go back to the architect to say, did you or did you not design the electrical system adequately? Even if he hired subcontractor to do that, it would be his responsibility, because he's the one who said to the contractor, put this in. And the contractor may or may not have electrical knowledge, he just followed the plans. But I absolutely agree with you, there is culpability here. And I have two concerns. The first is, let's get air conditioning up and running in here, because it's just too hot to try and work without it. And then let's go back and figure out who's responsible, and let's get paid for it. But, you know, just in the past, each time I would go to the contractor, he'd say, let me show you the plan to go, I did exactly that, and there wasn't a whole lot more we could say. Then we'd go back to the architect and say, well, your plan is, that was kind of like the restroom, the men's restroom, we had the fixture that was bad. You know, we went round and round on that, too, and it came down to it was just designed poorly, wasn't designed properly, and the architect refused to take responsibility for it. But he's a very reputable architect. And what I mean by that, he's a big company, it's not just some fly-by-night we picked up off the internet. So I assume, A, he has insurance if he refuses, and B, he probably has assets. So my feeling is, we really need to delve into this and figure out who is responsible. Yes, ma'am?
Because I was going to say, if you track it all the way back and then come back to the architect, he should pay a labor, which is a $4,000-whatever, which that seems awful too high. And the unit itself should be replaced by where we bought it from. It should be.
That's certainly, that's certainly part of the discussion.
Yeah, and I think that's the plan. This all happened Thursday. We were in a meeting all, for most of the day yesterday. So I did ask our administrative assistant to call that HVAC guy and have him come down and continue that investigation portion, as well as service and maintain whatever we've got up and running now. And the commissioners, of course, will pay for that. And then, as conversation with Mr. Spar, subsequent to all this stuff being taken care of, then we'll probably look at finding a ongoing maintenance contract for these units down here. But I, from my experience in the construction industry, nobody's going to replace that unit on their dime. They might nickel and dime the parts and pieces that have failed, but they're not going to come in and take that whole unit out and put in a new unit. So at least that's my opinion, I'm speaking for them.
But if you push enough, and push all the way to the back, they got insurance that covers it. Don't get yourself. So they might as well use it for that instead of putting in their own power.
Yeah, and it's very difficult, as Mr. Prince said, to go back on the installer, because unless they put in a faulty piece of equipment or a piece of equipment that was under spec, they can barely get past the minimum. If it's a 30-amp breaker and they put in a 20-amp breaker, then they're liable. But if it was 30 to 50 amp and they put in the cheapest 30-amp breaker they could come up with, they're no longer culpable.
Smaller breaker than what?
I don't know that. Again, he had some notes, and I asked for those, but I didn't get them, so we'll appreciate that. Other public comment?
Speaking of, it's been noticed the water coming through the wall.
Saw that stain earlier. Couldn't begin to tell you how long it's been there or when it happened, but I would certainly have thought they waterproofed the outside of this building, but.
That's a really interesting stain, because during the remodel, water seeped in around the bottom with the wall and the floor need. And we paid extra to have a sub system put in with a float and all that to eliminate it, which apparently did. But that's weird, because that wouldn't have fallen under the sub system that was installed.
Too high for that, isn't it?
Yeah, it's much too high for that. So I'm thinking maybe, like Karen Flower said, it probably wasn't sealed, meaning it was.
Somebody watering a flower bed up against the wall there?
It's all the rain we've been getting.
Okay. Other public comment? Yes, ma'am?
I would like to thank you very much for emceeing the fundraiser for the library.
Oh, you're welcome.
That was a fun time, it was a very successful time, and as the library is striving to serve the community even better, and we have more expenses, that was very helpful. So thank you very much, you did an excellent job.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It was enjoyable, we had fun. Nice evening, it was a great, great event. Thank you for that. Anything else? Okay, we'll move on. Gentlemen, unfinished business?
I have none.
Nor do I.
No.
New business? Again, we'll allow for public comment for each new business item prior, if it's an action item, prior to taking a vote. And you're welcome to participate in that. Consideration of hiring the director of the Office of Emergency Management position, the first item on the business, yes, sir?
Just for clarification, we're not going to be naming names. We have three of us, and then we've gone over 12 times to make sure we have the numbers right. We have four candidates that we interviewed. We're going to refer to those, either of those individuals as candidate one, two, three, and four. To open the discussion, I would like to move that we ask our Human Resources Manager to offer to candidate number three the position. And.
Second to motion, the movement second to offer the Office of Emergency Management position to candidate number three. That is the right name, right? That's correct. Okay. Last thing I want to do.
That would be a.
Discussion.
Yeah, let me say a couple things, just so everybody understands. We are very serious about the sunshine laws that we all abide by. And you see us having a lot of discussion on the first time we had to get the chance to talk in public, is in front of you all. And so, so we take that seriously. And so we are, want you all to know that we had a workshop and did interview lots of good candidates. Seven, I guess, is what we looked at. We eliminated three that were clearly not eligible, wanting to make a career change, just like a cook turning into a seamstress, or, you know, a cook being an engineer, or an engineer being a cook. So it didn't fit. So before, we came up with, though, were really competitive, very competitive, even one from out of state, which makes you wonder, and Colorado attracts a lot of people from everywhere, and I don't blame you for wanting to get out of Arizona. So anyway, it was a very good meeting, and I think we angst over it all. And I happen to agree with that recommendation, I think, that after looking at all of them and it was tight, and I'm all for candidate number three, is that the why?
That's the motion.
That's the motion.
Yeah, I guess just a couple of comments about that. One of the other processes that we had elected to follow is that if we do do this candidate number thing, it allows us, if we need to, if we, if candidate number three, for example, today, if the motion passes, if candidate number three doesn't accept the position, then we can go back and offer another candidate that position. And so we just don't feel comfortable throwing names out before we even know what the response of that is going to be. It's not, it is a kind of a secret thing, but it's not, because we're trying to hide, we're just trying to protect and handle personnel issues responsibly. I'm all in on candidate number three. I thought that candidate certainly rose to the top fairly quickly. I'm a big believer in the process. We talked about that a lot since this Office of Emergency Management position came open, that regardless of what we think on the front end, I believe we need to allow the process to take its natural course and go through that, and not circumvent those processes wherever it's convenient or quick. We have struggled with not having an Office of Emergency Manager since the evening of June 6th. We're not comfortable not having an OEM. It would have been really easy just to hire somebody right then and there, but I think as commissioners, we felt like that was not the best process to use. And so we've kind of been on the lam and at risk since June 6th without an Office of Emergency Manager person. So we didn't take that lightly.
If I may, Commissioner, Cindy Howard, who is leading us, it's not that we were high and dry. She did, she worked on an interim basis separately after she resigned. In the event there was an emergency, we weren't just a drifted sea. So I just wanted to mention that. She was a consummate professional and said, of course, I'll help you if you need it.
And we did actually pay her for some hours where she worked. It was minimal, but yeah, she was certainly available. So I'm excited about supporting your motion. I think we will be, we will be in good shape if the motion passes. Yes, sir?
What's the compensation for this position?
$48,000 is the starting salary. Further discussion? Public comment?
Did Christie?
Coleman.
Coleman Holt.
She actually introduced herself as Christie Coleman.
Okay. Just because, so she's known as that. So she sat in the interview process as well, right?
That's correct. And that's a great question, and probably begs a little further explanation.
Explain the board.
The interview committee were the three commissioners and Christie Holt, Christie Coleman Holt, who is the regional manager for the Office of Emergency Manager for this region in Colorado. We invited her to sit in as a full member of that. Well, I take that back, not as a full member, because she doesn't have voting rights, but we asked her to sit in, participate in that. She asked questions, and at the end of the day, gave us her recommendations. And as counsel indicated earlier, he sat in on those, as well as our Human Resource Officer, Don Hodge. Those were the people that were present, the commissioners invited Christie and told her that we'd asked for a recommendation, she was not going to be a voting member. Great point, thank you.
But we did ask for other entities, including the Sheriff's Department, if they had questions they'd like us to present. And I'm not sure we received a plethora of those, but we wanted you part of the discussion, but other agencies.
Yeah, including the fire.
Fires.
And you know, as a point of process, too, and I've had a couple people ask me this, and I never thought about it, because we kind of live that day-to-day. The Office of Emergency Manager falls under the supervision of the three commissioners, quote-unquote. We are that person's boss, so we felt it was our responsibility to hire that person and not bring in six or seven people out of the community to actually do the hiring. Right or wrong, I'm not saying, I just, that's what we, as commissioners, shook out to do, and so.
Therefore, makes it right.
Yeah, I guess so. He said, therefore, makes it right, that's what we decided. But she does, she or he, I say she, because Cindy Howard, she did answer to the commissioners directly. She did not have any other supervisors. So that's how that shook out. Further discussion, gentlemen? Further public comment? Yes, sir?
One more question.
Yeah, no problem.
I know there'd been some discussion prior to Cindy resigning and then with the new position, is that, is that a full salary position, or is it salary plus overtime? Is it exempt or not exempt?
Exempt position.
Thank you.
And that conversation was had with all the applicants yesterday? Yep. And if you're not up to speed on that lingo, exempt salaries, exempt personnel are not eligible for overtime. It's a salary position, you work the hours necessary to get the job done, yes, sir?
Or comp time?
Or comp time.
Now, that's a discussion that we're still working on, whether that's appropriate or not, and how to handle it, but at the moment, that's the, that's the rule of the county.
I just curious.
Yeah. You gotta love living in the rumor world, too. Somebody asked me, is Sheriff Byerly hiring the OEM? I said, no, why would they? Well, that's who the OEM works for. I said, no, it's not. Works with Sheriff's Department, but, and so people, you know, go along and they kind of just start forming these ideas and thoughts, and, right, I mean, I understand it, but anyway. So, further discussion, gentlemen? Hearing done, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor of offering the OEM position to candidate number three? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose name? Carry. And if you don't mind, we'll move on to the next item, and I'll quick send out an email, unless you want to do that. No, I'll do it.
Yeah, you bet.
Yeah, you may.
And then I'll, if you'll take the lead on the next agenda item while I do that, that 'd be great. So, we'll move on to discussion of the July 19th visit. Cory Gardner. Commissioner Canna, would you do that, please?
Sure. Okay, let me...
Can she come back?
Yes, yep.
All right, I'm going to read a letter from Kathy Garcia, well, from me to everybody else, but Kathy Garcia, who is Senator Gardner's Regional Coordinator for the Senator, called last, a couple of weeks ago, wanting us to host a visit. Let me read what I sent out to Paul and Steve and the commissioners. It says, Cory Gardner's Regional Director Kathy Garcia asked us to host a, and coordinate a meeting with Senator Gardner on Friday, 19 July, between 10:45 and 11:45. They're going to be in Pueblo doing the same thing, and then they're driving up here right after that. So, hopefully, they'll get here in time, they're supposed to, and then drive up, they give themselves an hour or over and they get here. They've already done it in Trinidad, and they go around the state. The senator likes to walk into the businesses, shake hands, talk what's good and bad and all that, and I'm going to go through that in just a second. So, he wants to tour and visit, discuss issues, obstacles, things that are good to affecting our small business and county communities. Issues can include anything, tariff, if the tariffs are impacting our agribusiness kind of thing, trade deals that are working with Mexico, Canada, US, et cetera. Broadband, especially our issue with the phones in Wetmore, things like that. He's been on top of the Wetmore thing all along, because Kathy's been attending our meetings. Also, illegal immigration. We've had issues with that, and that's why I've got, I've talked to Shannon about discussing some of the drug busts we've had as a result of things going on illegally in the county. Could include other things, low-cost housing, affordable housing, grants, process, those kinds of things. Anything he can affect at a federal level and influence at a state level is pregame. He wants to personally talk and visit with the individual owners, could be the agribusiness, that kind of thing, as much as possible. So, I've got some ideas, and I'm going to, I'm just going to step through a couple of things, then we'll, we'll have a discussion on how to handle an hour's visit with, and get as much value out of that as we can. So, I thought the first thing, of course, he's driving into town, so it's logical to meet in Silver Cliff first. And I have been in contact with our Amish community and asked them if they would be willing to pony up a wagon with eight slots in it, and meet probably on the street between Willie's and Tony's, basically, and gather up, because I think it's in order to, we can't stop at every business, he's not going to have time to walk in and talk to everybody, but what we can do is gather people at some corners that have businesses in the area, Willie's, Tony's, could be even the Dome, could be whoever else, Silver Cliff, Steve, that you want to highlight and need to talk to, and get people that are willing to not be bashful, letting you very personal, and he'll, and there's no, he'll be in casual dress, you know, don't, don't have to throw a tie on, he'll come in his Levi's and dust off the cement off your cover all, if that's what he's doing. We could, I asked the sheriff if he would be willing to pony up his mule and get on it, and ride beside us on the wagon as we go down the street. And the reason for that is, it's easy to talk, you know, it's quiet, we can go down the streets, not on the highway, and talk about issues affecting the counties or the cities that we could have a little more time to chat with him on and highlight with Shannon on the side there, hollering, or, and I think this is unique, because what he did in Trinidad, you know, he stood in front of a bar and huddled there with a bunch of cars running at him, so he, he would go inside, and they lost the effect of having him interact with some of the rest of the crew. Also, what's important is, let's, let's get your ideas down, and I'd like to have you send the issues to me and to Meredith, so that we can type it up. She said what was very useful, even though they don't have time to talk to every issue or everything and satisfy your itch, that he'll look to Kathy and he'll say, you know, he'll remember some, some comments somebody made, and especially if it's on the list, he may ask her to remind him of the things that we did talk about, and she's got a piece of paper to write some notes against while she's listening to the things, to help him follow up. And he's very good at following up, according to Kathy. I haven't had anything followed up with me, but I haven't been called in either. So...
How are you? I'm sorry.
Let me finish that, and then, I'm just, I'm not saying this is what we'll do, I'm saying here's some ideas. After we get down, I would recommend, you know, we could stop at either the Conoco Station or West Cliff Petroleum, and get the gasoline guys together, get Subway, and all three there. Let them talk about road tax, are we, are we making any money? Are we worried about the issues on the drilling in the state? Are we going to drive costs up? Maybe a tourism guy could be there, too, because it matters, travel in and out costs and all that, I don't know. Then from down, from there, let's get down the middle of Main Street, and then maybe we get shops, tourism kinds of things, other local businesses. And I'm not sure where to end up, and maybe, I don't have to ask Shannon what he thinks, but we could actually block off the street after the highway and open up, be able to stop in the middle of the block there and bring different people on each side of the street to comment and things. Go down from there, pass there down to the bowling alley, maybe, or you turn and we end up at the Amish furniture store, I don't know. But we'll have to have a plan, so that the, who's coming, there's not, if it's just him and Kathy coming, and it's just us, and we'll have somebody chase the wagon down the street, bring the car back down there, and, and meet with him and get him out of town. Good news is, if, if it runs over, we're okay. If we were Pueblo, we'd be in trouble, because there, he does not, from what I understand, have him meet immediately after. So, we got a little leeway. So, that's some thoughts, that's what he wants to do. I think it's a good thing. I, I know we hosted Tipton, and I wasn't around for that, and I don't know how, how you all handled that, Tom, you were there for that. So, we can get some other ideas. So, let's talk about it. Paul, go ahead.
This is Friday.
Yeah.
Is this, is this in the newspaper?
No.
So, now's the...
That's right. We didn't get it in time, and what we'll do is, we'll have, good ideas is to have, and it's okay, because word of mouth, we can get out right now, but the big deal is, we get the papers with some cameras, take some pictures, and have a very good follow-up with what went on. And plus, you know, it, it, this is more intimate also, because we'll be able to go down the street and they'll wonder what the heck's on Amish wagon, who the heck's on it? It gives him a chance to actually talk to the people as opposed to cutting away through crowds. So, some thoughts.
Well, I'll just speak for myself. I'm a business owner, but I don't have any issues in my business per se with the federal government that I know of. But I do have, I do have issues regarding the town, the county.
Yeah, absolutely.
And those are the issues that I would bring up. I don't know about Steve, but, you know, we've got, we've got issues, in my view, with water, long-term. We've got, you know, we've got issues in the town with, well, you mentioned safety just a moment ago, this new staff member of yours in a crisis, but downtown West Cliff catches on fire. Do we have enough water there? We can't afford, as a water district, to, we have to replace the entire infrastructure of our water system. We don't have the money for that.
See, that's a good point.
And it's a safety issue. The other one would be broadband. That's critical to our future success, and I think Steve shows that. So, I don't know if, those are the issues, the broader issues that I would look for some assistance from the federal government on, grants or whatever, but I attended a meeting last May, a year ago, in Vail, on broadband, and the first thing I left his mouth, he says, if you're a rural small town and you don't have broadband, you will die.
I know.
So, that's a critical issue. Those are the ones you really want, these lifestyles.
One quick question, which is, those are perfect. You mentioned your small business. To me, the big issue on the federal level are taxes, you know, the tax breaks, and everybody's blaming, thinking it went to the rich guys, and it affects small businesses. Things like maybe we would want to push for a permanent, we can make that tax break permanent? I don't know. If not, should there be a follow-on for that? Are you paying too much sales tax or city or state tax? Is it, you know, from a business point of view? He needs to hear that. The more he hears those things, the more he's liable to take on something that you take for granted that you can't beat, can't beat city or uncle saying...
Our county taxes are worth a lot.
Well, we want to raise county taxes, reduce the state and the federal.
But yeah, taxes are an issue.
I mean, that's a good plan.
But, but minimum wage, you know, pushing...
Now, minimum wage is another...
That's a, that's an idiotic idea.
Yeah, and he needs to hear you say it, and as a businessman.
But Colorado's already, already pushing it up. And when you push up the minimum wage, it pushes everybody's...
Well, the, the poor people are always the people that are making what's the bottom, right? So, it just rate, it inflates everything, cost of a loaf of bread goes up.
So, anyway, those are the issues I have.
And, and along that with Shannon over there, there's the Second Amendment issues that affect towns, you know, things that you can think of, but the other thing, the laws are the sanctuary city thing. Well, West Cliff's not a sanctuary city.
The challenge is, is like I told you, the Villas, so Friday is...
I know, we got, we got...
You have the county going on, it's all the livestock shows on Friday, and I'm announcing the, the livestock shows, and I've already obligated myself to that.
So, maybe we get the undersheriff to come and talk.
Yeah, I mean, we can get Chris to come and talk to him, but I mean, I...
Yeah, timing's...
Yeah, the timing, it just didn't work out.
I was worried when she first brought up it was the rodeo day, to have him go down the street with the parade going on.
Well, you may want to think about bringing him by the county, for me, you're going to have the biggest group of people in the county.
Well, that's a thought, we can, we can go out there.
I mean, what's this?
Pick him up out there.
County's egg, that's a big egg.
You know, it just depends on your goal.
Right.
Is your goal to have him talk to business people, or is your goal to talk to real people? Not that business people aren't real people, wait, wait, wait.
Well, business people is key, but then it's broader than that.
Well, it feels like, awfully rushed, it feels like...
But it is.
Okay, everybody, stop what you're doing on the most important weekend of your year.
That's why we didn't want...
Because Cory's coming.
Right.
You know, maybe Cory ought to find out what a good time is for western county.
Why am I putting him on that wagon?
Just saying.
Yeah, I agree. Give it to him.
Two days' notice sucks.
Yeah. Well, it's been three days.
There's that Amish, I don't know if Amish or not, but he has that great hit, he puts him in the parade, he's got the bird picture on.
Yeah, that's what he's getting.
Is that, that's a beautiful rig.
Yeah, he's not Amish.
Well, there's that guy, Ben Lee, and the guy I've been talking with is actually Freeman Miller. He's got an eight, a wagon, and he's just going to, if we needed to bag two of them, we could get two of them together, that'd be enough.
But back to what I was talking about, is there a time, maybe at the bowling alley at the end, when he could spend 15 minutes with us, the elected officials in the county, to talk about issues that are broad, and just West Cliff or something, or whatever?
Yeah.
Where the federal government can help us.
Yeah, we can give him a teaser in the wagon and talk about it depth.
Something like that.
That's fine. We could take a quick trip out to the fair, back down around and into the bowling alley.
Little executive session, I'd like that idea.
Yeah.
Well, the, you know, what time does it start?
10:45 to 11:45 is the time. I think it, and I'll verify this with Kathy, that, that he's not pushed on the backside.
If I may, I just, I just want to go on the record and say, while I agree with the comments about, we didn't get much, much warning, and timing is probably not great for our county at the moment. Senator Gardner's come to us, and Kathy has come to our community fairly often on a regular basis, and I got to say, I really appreciate that. I mean, he obviously cares about the small community, cares about the customer base, so I agree with everybody, the timing is terrible, but the man does come and he does care. And on a personal note, I unfortunately be on vacation that day. I could have moved my vacation around had I had more warning, but I would not be able to.
Further comment? Yes, ma'am?
I would say take him out to the fair and feed him lunch out there.
Could do that.
Yeah.
Good idea.
I didn't, I'm sorry.
Give him lunch at the fairgrounds.
Oh.
Yes, ma'am.
I would suggest maybe today you go to all the businesses, because you ask somebody to say something, what they want, what their desires are.
They got a thing.
And you're totally blank. But if they have a few days to think about it, and they're all going to be busy that day, so maybe they can get a spokesperson for that business to be there and, you know, sort over what their wishes are.
Yeah, and you're right. We didn't have a lot of notice. Remember, one of the things that complicated us is, we couldn't agree on what we're doing unless we're in public. So, this was an ideal time. Luckily, she, they, she gave me a couple of days to say, okay, let's get the notice out and talk about this today. It, it'll come together tomorrow, we'll do exactly that, we need to talk to everybody. I'm looking at Paul and Steve, gathering the people, and discuss what, you know, just what we've just said, and the kind of the items that concern us, and they ought to be able, even if they echo the same thing, their strength in numbers, and maybe it impacts them more, or the minimum wage might be a big deal and it'll knock somebody right out of the ground tomorrow, if that happens.
Further comment? Yes, sir?
We, we did discuss this in our staff meeting on Monday in Silver Cliff, and we determined that the two primary issues that are federal issues, one echoes, it's the broadband, getting as much of the federal broadband money as we possibly can to help get broadband into the county, and the other is our unrelending search to get our zip code back.
Well, that's okay.
And Gardner did sign a letter in support of that.
Matter of fact, I also thought of the post office problem we had, so, seriously.
Yeah.
Because they have ignored us, and they pushed the problem up at the lowest common denominator's, we don't want to deal with it, we're going to send everything to Denver, and it can come back and waste three days, it doesn't matter to us.
Further comment? I mean, pertaining to this, okay? This is not an action item, correct?
No.
Okay. So, I've desperately waited patiently for the opportunity to gather my wife down in a BOCC meeting. I did that today, however, she didn't hear that.
You need to hit it hard, as hard as you hit it with us.
Yeah, that, that would be right after.
Did you guys have separate cars?
We did. No, we came in the same car, I thought you meant going home.
You got a, you want a ride, Tom?
Yeah. Yeah, I will need a ride, because we're actually in her pickup. I'm going to request about a five-minute break, but before I do that, I just want to go on record in welcoming and congratulating our new Office of Emergency Manager, Meredith Nichols. Woo-hoo! Meredith Nichols. Yep. We'll stand in recess.
Well, guys, get me your ideas, get this to the top, Meredith. Is that for your wife or for us?
Well, she's not in here.
She's hanging around. Chased her off.
Meeting will come back to order, left of record shows 10:36 AM on July 17th. Our next agenda item, well, actually, let me get the agenda. Before we move on from our last agenda item, well, sorry, from the hiring of the OEM, we need to have a discussion at some point, we don't meet again until the 31st, about start date, which we were remiss in having that be part of the conversation all along. I spoke to Meredith about how she would feel about the possibility of maybe transitioning immediately to... immediately half-time administrative assistant and half-time OEM manager. Certainly, we can have that discussion, see what you guys think, we can have a discussion with Meredith, and see how she feels.
I think, that was one of the questions we spoke about during the interview, transition, if you were a successful candidate, and you were very amenable to doing that, working both jobs until we can get a new person up to speed. I'm fine with a split position, but I'd like her to be hired as the OEM, and then filling in as the admin assistant in the interim.
Okay, I kind of agree, I don't know how we handle the salary.
That's where I was going, I, I think she should be paid the new OEM position, because if an emergency comes down, she'll walk away from the BOCC admin and take care of the county like she's supposed to. So, I think we're giving her the responsibility immediately, let's give her the salary and the benefit, but we already have the benefits, but, anything else that goes against that's my opinion.
Mr. Kennedy, any thoughts?
Yeah, that's, probably that's the right thing to do. It's gonna be hard, there's a lot of stuff that we keep sending her away.
The grants are already written, so we're good.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I, I think the assumption there with Commissioner Prince's comments was that, and I think the intent would be that as a full-time salaried OEM position, if and when it's appropriate for you to be out of that office, spend some time as an admin assistant until we can find a replacement. And I would think we need to start that process.
Yeah, we gotta do that, being a good average.
So, let's deal with a couple of issues, but let's deal with them one at a time. Does that sound reasonable to you, Meredith? That you could come over an hour or two in the afternoon, or morning, or whenever, and do that other job, and we'll transition you on the pay scale to full-time OEM?
Will you do a little finance cut, too?
I would assume, probably help as needed, until we can find a replacement. The chair would entertain a motion of that, in fact, I think we need to formalize this.
Hey, I move that we immediately offer the position to start, effective what day?
Today.
Today. To the OEM position. And, part-time, as, are we gonna limit that to when we do the interviews for the, or two weeks, or what? What are we gonna do? Whatever.
You never really come on this motion, but here's my thought.
I want to make a motion, though.
My thought would be, we, she accepted the position, so we don't have to offer anything to her, make the position effective immediately, along with the salary, and as time permits, she'll assist the BOCC in administrative duties until we're able to fulfill that, fill that position.
Including the transition to a new employee?
Including helping, when we get a new employee, helping that person figure out where the door key is.
Okay, so that's-
Readable?
Yes.
I'll second the motion. Been moving and seconded, now I gotta restate it.
He's gotta re-look.
Been moving and seconded that we immediately make this position available to Meredith at the stated salary, with the understanding that she will continue to assist the BOCC as needed and as necessary, and also with the transition to the new admin assistant. Discussion. Public comment? Here, no, proceed to vote, all favor say aye. Aye, pose nay. Carrie's. Again, congratulations. Hopefully, at some point, we'll have the opportunity to tell you how excited we are. I know it's been a little bit painful, and a little bit awkward, but you handled yourself as confident, professional, and we appreciate that, and we certainly look forward to having you onboard as our OEM. Next item on the agenda, it was update on the RETAC grant, Beth Archuleta came in last week, it's a, it was all, I don't want to sound glib here, but it's almost a housekeeping thing, it's an annual grant, it was $15,000. She had the documentation to expend $10,074 of that $15,000 on five or six different mini-grants within the RETAC grant. I signed those, I suppose, maybe we, I don't remember that we had a motion last year to sign those, but if, if the group feels that we need to, then we can certainly-
I don't remember if we did, would you though?
I think we did.
And even if we, even if it's really not necessary, we cover our bases by doing it, so, I'll go ahead, go ahead.
No, that's fine.
I should go ahead and move that.
Would be to ratify some, they've already been signed.
To ratify the RETAC grant that has already been signed.
Okay.
On that.
Okay. Been moving and seconding to ratify the action of the chairman signing the RETAC grant, presented by Beth Archuleta. Discussion, further discussion. Certainly, I've got those, both hard copy, we have them both hard copy and digital, so if you want them, or need to look at it. I'll just tell you, without me going through and digging all that up real quick, that part of that money was for medical direction, part of it was for paying registration fees for a conference in Keystone, as well as a WILZ conference, and I couldn't remember what WILZ conference was. Did you see the email, or no?
Yeah, I sent it to you.
Yes. Oh, you did, okay. It's actually, this conference is named after a guy, W-I-L-Z, and I just, that got by me somewhere in the past, they went last year as well, so, pardon?
Not an acronym.
No, it's not an acronym, it's a guy's name, can you believe it? So, it was just kind of housekeeping stuff, business as usual, we need to get these grants submitted, so that's where that came from.
What was the dollar?
$10,074 had been earmarked, it's not expended yet, because we haven't, she was gonna wait till we met, but, so that was the earmarked money. So, there's, you know, roughly $4,003, $4,036 left. And then, along with that RETAC grant, I should tell you this, too, Patrick Fiori caught me out while I was mowing weeds, and brought his RETAC grant that was part of this, but the little different signatures on it, and that was for their medical direction for surgery rescue. So, I think it was 700 bucks, or something, it, it was a little separate from Beth's grant paper. He handles his own, she handles her own, so that's where we're at. Public comment?
What's RETACs?
Regional Emergency Trauma and-
Advisory.
Advisory Council.
Council.
And there's Southern Colorado RETAC. Yes, yeah, but RETAC is a statewide, or, it's broken into regions, but, yeah, Regional Emergency Trauma, thank you for asking that. Further comment? Here, no, proceed to go, all favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion, Carrie's, thank you. Motion to ratify, Carrie's. The next item on the agenda is discussion of the EMS serving the Wetmore area. Obviously, we have a workshop this afternoon, but the commissioner decided to put this on and leave it on the agenda, in the event that there was some discussion that needed to occur during this public meeting, and, and it could be an action item, I guess, because it's on the agenda, but, gentlemen, anything? Obviously, it's hard to know what's gonna go on in the workshop, so it's, it's a guessing game. Yes, sir?
Look, I mean, I, I want to refer, there's been a question as to who owns equipment, and I found a document, and I believe you guys have it all seen, the commissioner's have it all seen, back from 1989, where I think it gives, it tells us who is the owner of the equipment itself.
It's a title of your document, that agreement?
It just says agreement on the top, it's January 3rd.
Yep.
What it says is, we'll go through the where it was, but then, now therefore, number one, that the board hereby leases to the district the ambulances and associated equipment owned by the board. I'm thinking that that probably indicates that the county commissioners own the ambulances and the associated equipment with this, and at least back in 1989, we leased that to them. So, that was just my question as to, we're still trying to decide who owns what.
I thought that they turned that over, though, and they turned it over, did they? There's no trace of the title taking, changing.
I talked to Donna about it, she says the county doesn't have any claim to that property, we've never paid any insurance on the vehicle, don't have any, any paperwork, which we own it, so, it was all turned over to the hospital district.
Yeah, the other thing that I happened to see on that same document, item number four, that the hospital district agrees to pay all cost of operation and to provide ambulance service, that has historically been provided by the ambulance corps, even though that service may be for areas outside of the hospital district.
Even though that service will-
What did I say, may? I'm sorry. It says, even though that service will be for areas outside of the hospital district. It doesn't say hospital district, but the whole document was an agreement between the county and the hospital district. So, that's the district they're referring to, and that was signed by George Grayford Keith Hood. So, my question all along has been, who owns that equipment, who owns that barn? I've, they've made reference to it in some of the documentation several different ways. It's almost, read between the lines and try to figure out what the intent was, and I'm not sure that I'm capable of doing that. Yes, ma'am?
What is the hospital district? Is Wetmore outside?
No, it's outside side, yeah.
So, it's just in the valley?
Goes down the-
Yeah, there's a map that outlines that, and I, I was gonna look up, I've got the legal language of the, of the-
If you, if you look at the county map, it's the western boundary all the way to, there's a straight line, and it follows the section line, all the way straight down through McKinney Junction.
Okay.
And everything this side.
And it juts up, but laying north, just a little bit down.
Mike, do you happen to know the mile marker at McKinsey Junction?
16.
16, yeah. And there's some, there's been reference made in some emails recently, that the district would provide coverage to mile marker 20, so, obviously, that's, well, that's above McKinney Junction?
Mile marker 20 is what's down.
This is 25.
The Bueller Road's 22.
22, so it'd be below that, yeah. So, I don't know, that doesn't line up with the district boundaries, and I think that's one of the things we need to discuss this afternoon.
In the early years, the Wetmore precinct, precinct two, the boundary was 165 and east.
Right.
Now, legislative direction, because the population of the precincts weren't equal, or as equal as they could be, so there was some direction to reevaluate the precinct boundaries, and I was on that committee, and Cleo Day and John Coleman were commissioners at the time, so it's been a while, and that's why the precinct two boundary moved clear up to Rosita Road, parts of Blumenau, and was only to get more equal population between the three precincts. So, when the-
Hospital.
Hospital district, part of precinct two already pays that MLEV in the hospital district, and part of us don't.
Right.
And the way the ambulance worked, even when I was on patrol, it was, I don't know if there was ever a written MOU, or just a verbal MOU, but, first responder said, who can get to the areas first? And Rye, always covered up Bishop's Castle, far away down, about mile post 12 on 165, and Florence says, we go to Custer Fremont Line, it's only a mile from Wetmore, we'll cover the rest, doesn't make sense not to. So, it was a, where's the need, and who can get there the quickest? So, Florence, by agreement, covered what Rye didn't, basically, if we had any, any needs, crashes or anything, Florence covered from 165, their fire rescue from 165 east, and Rye would come over to about mile post 12, and they'd come farther if they needed to. So, there's been a question that those people in Wetmore don't want to pay that extra percentage, and my response was, it's never been posed, because there wasn't a need.
Right.
There was coverage, and, so that's why it never really expanded to our area, and then Florence, as everybody should know, no longer covers into Custer County, and it's, they have just some staffing issues, they, they don't have the personnel to handle it. So, that's, that's kind of where we're at now, and I think that's why I wanted to speak-
Yeah, yeah, great point, and a pretty good synopsis, Mike, thank you. I'm assuming everybody in here knows that Florence has informed the county commissioners they are discontinuing ambulance service. Is that news to anybody, or not? Okay, so we're good there. Yes, sir?
I hold it in Wetmore, but it seems to me like, with two issues, one is, who pays for this? And two, speed of service. And if you expect it to come from West Cliff, down here, that can be 45 minutes to an hour, and Florence seems to be a lot more accessible now. Having said that, they're not in the hospital district here, but if they voted themselves into the district, okay, then you definitely can collect the money and pay it to Florence.
Florence is not an option.
You don't want to do it at all?
None.
Yeah, no.
They're done. Canyon, Pueblo, Custer County, West Cliff.
Well, do we know they would not do it if they were given the money to do it?
He just told us they were no longer gonna provide service, because it was not about the money, it was, they did not have the personnel.
Even with the money, they can't hire anyone?
Well, they're volunteer corps.
How does the school work? They send children from school here to, to Florence School, how's that work?
They have MOUs, I'm not sure they're IGAs, but there's an agreement that they can ship students.
Who pays for that?
I think the families pay, if there's a difference.
We pay our school staff and RE2.
Yeah, okay, yes, that's right. RE2 down here on this district. Yeah, so I think, back to Mike's point, is, we have to clearly understand, the precinct boundary has nothing to do with the hospital district. So, you can't look at your precinct down here and go, oh, okay. None of us are in the hospital district, as Mike said, that's not true. Part of precinct two is in the hospital district, part of it is not. Now-
But, are they paying the tax?
Who?
Guys that are in it.
In-
The ones that were on the border?
Yes.
Because, back when you, what you said, the district borders moved.
Some people in precinct two do pay hospital district taxes.
Correct.
The majority don't, but, nonetheless, so then that really, the question, one of my questions is, back in the day, 1981, well, it wouldn't have been 81, because that was, that was establishment of the clinic, when the hospital district was formed, or any other time, did the people in this part of precinct two ever have that choice on a ballot initiative? I haven't been able to find that.
I've never seen it on the ballot.
But I don't know that. And so, people, people say, well, wait a minute, obviously, Wetmore voted not to do that. And I said, well, no, no, that's not necessarily the fact.
That's what's told to us, I know that's not true.
Yeah, I said, that, I don't believe that's the fact, I think the fact is that citizens of, let's just call it Wetmore, you understand what I'm saying, the lower portion of precinct two, has probably never voted on this. But I couldn't find documenta, documentation, one way or the other. I mean, I looked, and I've got the ballot initiatives, copies of them that I could find. Kelly?
I think that all is in the stuff that went to the court, because when you become a special district, you have to go through the court first.
Got it.
And all that, they came up with a map, that said, this is what we want in that district, and so then, the people within that district voted, do you want to be for this district or not?
Yes.
And Wetmore was not.
They never asked for it.
Yeah, they never asked, because you were never saying that.
So, I think, we're probably in a position to say, well, then, probably we need to ask the residents of the lower portion of precinct two what they want to do.
Does the lower portion pay any tax to Fremont County, or anybody else?
No, not for ambulance.
No.
None at all?
No.
I, I can't speak for anybody else here, but because we are in- I, I can't speak for anybody else here, but because we were in Florence's district at one time, I was receiving mailings to donate to their emergency fund, ambulance fund. And so for me personally, we've always done that, so...
But not a tax?
No, it's not official. Right. It's just a donation, but it's my way of saying, thanks for being available.
Commissioner Prince, Paul was waiting, if you don't mind, that's okay. Go ahead.
The mil levy for the hospital district is just three mils?
Three mils.
And I just wondered what that would generate, if it was applied to...
Down here?
Yeah.
A thirty mil actually.
You don't know, he hasn't on you.
I was gonna just dovetail what you started with. The commissioner's discussions up to now is that we would like to invite, at some point on, on a ballot coming up, the portion of the county that is not part of the three mil ambulance assessment on your taxes to join. So that, well, I suspect we'll agree to put that on the ballot, and that would be in 2020 when that comes on. The anticipated amount we're looking at is about fourteen thousand dollars that'll be raised to ambulance service, which unfortunately, an ambulance alone is over a hundred thousand dollars. And if we had to build a barn and we had a crew, it's not gonna, at least the way we're looking at it now, it doesn't look like we're gonna be able to put an ambulance itself in the Wetmore area. And I mean Wetmore, I'm talking about the surrounding area, I'm just using it as a summation. What's distressing is that the hospital district, who is in charge of the ambulance now, came to us and said, county commissioners, it's outside of our district, your problem you fix it.
As of September ninth.
As of September ninth. Which is very soon, almost too soon for us to say, here's the plan we're gonna have in place. So we have spent many hours burning midnight oil trying to figure out, what are we gonna do? The one thing that is totally unacceptable is for residents of our county not to have emergency services if they need it. We're aware of an incident not long ago, within the last week or two.
July fifth.
Sir?
July fifth.
July fifth, where the ambulance was available up at the ambulance barn in, in West Cliff and failed to respond to a nine-one-one call. Flight for life came in and a firefighter assisted and that's not gonna fly, I'm sorry, in my opinion. And I'm speaking for myself now because this is not a decision we've made, that's for me. So a straddle with, with a major task here.
You know, I, I've been struggling with this a little. I truly believe that the way for the citizens of the lower portion of precinct two to have a say-so is to put something on the ballot. And then let the citizens decide whether or not they wanna be taxed for some kind of a EMS service.
They don't, they have food.
Kind of my take, but I don't, there are other options besides going to a ballot. And that's probably what we'll get into some this afternoon and talk about, maybe what that looks like. But I've got two other people wanting to ask a question. Go here and then Jack. Yes, ma'am?
I gotta leave here in just a minute, but I will be back.
Okay.
But had you ever checked with Pueblo? Pueblo County goes up to twenty, mile marker twenty-nine, so they would, they can probably go on up to a mile marker seventeen and a half and then Fremont. Fremont comes down a mile out of Wetmore that way.
When you say Pueblo, I'm assuming you're meaning AMR, ambulance service out of Pueblo?
Yeah, way up our services.
Or flight, or fixed wing, or rotary wing. So, yes, we had a meeting with AMR this last week, and we will have that discussion this afternoon, I'm sure, because they're gonna be here.
Oh, good.
Their representatives will be here, along with representatives in the hospital district and some other folks, probably Rye. I know they were invited, I have not heard whether or not they're gonna be here, but right now, the commissioners are, are looking that, that Florence is not an option. They've made that very clear. And it was not a money issue, it was staffing. They can barely hold their own down there. Canyon City is served by AMR ambulance as well. So if we talk about Canyon City and Pueblo, we're really talking about AMR, National Ambulance Service. So we need to understand that, but we'll go with that in a second.
Because AMR is a straight shot, I mean ninety-six is a straight shot, which is a lot faster than coming in.
The other side of the coin we really need to keep in mind is, we're talking about business, private business. And sometimes, what's a straight line and what isn't a straight line, and it doesn't matter to private business. Uh, hold on just a second, sir. Yes, ma'am?
Quick question. He said July fifth, ambulance was available, did not respond. I'm assuming it was not toned?
It was toned.
It was toned?
I've got the dispatch call right here.
Yes, I was.
Okay. Can you clarify on the...
No, we're gonna get some clarification this afternoon.
Thank you very much.
No problem. Uh, hold on just a second. Yes, Mr. John?
Well, talking about the one coming out of West Cliff, I was twice hauled by that meat wagon into, into Pueblo. And they were rapid, they were down here in less than half an hour. I don't say that service is like...
Yeah, I mean, in the vehicle, it's twenty-seven miles in a private POV, so you figure twenty-seven minutes if you were in Silver Cliff. An ambulance certainly has the capability of doing that. Hold on just a second, sir. Mrs. Flower, would you like to speak to...
I do some of the clarification too, and I guess it's, if it's all right with you, that I speak.
I just recognized you, yes.
Thank you. And it's directed to Kelly. I don't remember exactly how that mil levy was stated. Was it stated specifically for those people that live within the hospital district?
Would you read ballot initiative? I don't know if you have it with you today.
It was.
I don't, yeah, and it was, because it was the hospital district was the one that put it on the ballot. So it was for their district.
But in another document, it says they will respond outside the district. That was on a transfer. That's another discovery.
And then the other, the other thing that I wanted to mention about is ownership of the equipment. The, the majority of all of that equipment is bought with EMS and paramedics. So who does really own that?
Yeah, and I think that's where we're at, is trying to determine that with legal counsel. I've talked with the assessor. The assessor clearly says, I cannot unequivocally say that who does or does not own that. Their tax records don't determine legal ownership, that could be somewhere else. So we'll have to do a title search of that, and, and that's kind of in the works. To answer your question, in two thousand and fourteen, November of fourteen, ballot issue four A, shall Custer County taxes be increased up to two hundred and eighty thousand dollars annually? I'm gonna skip some of the ad valorem stuff and so on and so forth, at a rate of up to three mils. As the West Custer County Hospital Board of Directors shall determine and dedicate it solely to pay the cost of emergency medical ambulance services and not shall, and shall not be used to satisfy any other obligations. In that ballot initiative, there was nothing said about a hospital district. It was, and dedicated solely to pay the cost of emergency medical ambulance services.
I didn't think it was specific to the district.
Are you sure we didn't vote?
I don't know that. That was in precinct one, we could not find a ballot. See, that's the problem.
You could not vote on it because it was a hospital district question, therefore only the hospital district got to vote, even though it may not.
Which, I'm assuming some legal entity's gonna say, well, if only the hospital district voted on it, then the intent was that it was hospital district. But I claim that the language doesn't say that, so I think it was poorly written ballot initiative. We've lost track. Yes, ma'am?
So before twenty-fourteen, there was no money?
No.
Set aside for ambulance?
Uh, that's not correct.
We asked that question.
See, that's, that's, that's an issue. And Dan and I have contended for many, many years that there was another ballot initiative for the ambulance that the clinic just absorbed.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, it was, it was rumored, it was talked about for years.
Right. And, and a little bit towards that end, you won't get a lot of solace from this, but I have asked the executive director of the clinic to provide to the commissioners today the last five years' worth of budgets that include the line item budget of the money that was going to the ambulance service. I felt like that was our right to know that, not only as commissioners, but as private citizens. So we will see if we can get that information today or not. Uh, Mr. Mike?
Just a couple of comments. The key here is EMS service in this part of the county. Be interesting to know how many ambulance runs have been made by Florence and/or Custer County on the residents on this end of the county in any timeframe, say the last five years.
From just Custer or?
From...
Any?
You'd have to look at Florence's responses.
Okay, Florence, AMR out of Pueblo, whatever, okay.
But I would bet that number is pretty small for Rani residents, but every, we have, there isn't a weekend goes by we don't have a crash in Hartschel, and we need emergency services, and it shouldn't matter where they live. You shouldn't have somebody laying out here on the highway and have a full ambulance crew sitting up there in West Cliff saying, we're not gonna go down because those people in Wetmore don't wanna pay their first share. Because that is just not right. You gotta get first responders and ambulance EMT people on these crashes. Most of those people don't even, a lot of them don't live in the state.
That's right.
People coming back and forth from Pueblo. And, and we failed to provide a service that is essential.
It, it's almost like saying, if you're, if you don't live in the hospital district, we're not coming.
Yeah, but even, the point was made, even if you live in the hospital district and you're driving down out of the hospital district, and they're not gonna cross a boundary to get you baloney.
But that is, that is what they've done.
I know.
Clearly.
Where does that, pardon me? Where does that response go?
McKinsey Corner.
Well...
No, but I mean, if they're saying that they should go beyond the hospital district boundaries, where does that stop?
I maintain morally, the county...
It should go down county line.
County line.
So then everybody should be taxed according to that.
Or everybody should, hey, it doesn't have to be a tax. There's other alternatives.
Well, you could charge them for that and just...
We're gonna talk about what you said to know, but your point is exactly well taken. Some people are already paying through their tax, some people are not. And if there is some mechanism to obtain a fee from the people who are not until such time, if they can vote to put it on a tax, that sounds like something that's gonna be in the discussion this afternoon. And I can't pull either way on that. But the bottom line is, for your first part of the question is, the county commissioners are responsible to make sure that emergency service is available. And we're taking it very seriously to everybody in the county, not, I don't want some arbitrary line saying, that's hospital district.
So you're talking about here, or you're talking about San Isabel?
I'm talking about Custer County in total, yes. If San Isabel has an issue, we're going out there.
Mr. Mike, something else, or?
Well, I guess, in the short term, I think it was mentioned by one of the citizens at the last meeting, until this is figured out, how do we know that anybody that's down here is gonna have any type of ambulance response?
We do not.
And that's something that needs to be taken care of immediately.
And I think that's gonna be part of the conversation this afternoon. These are great questions. I just wanna ask you a quick question. Who is planning on being here this afternoon for the workshop? Okay, all right, perfect. Because we're gonna, some of this will be hashed out right again this afternoon, so I don't want you to get discouraged and go, my God, we just talked about that this morning. This will be a totally different demographics this afternoon, because there'll be a lot of players here. So we'll go probably over some of this again. Yes, sir?
I just wanted to clarify my statements and so everyone in the room understands. So the EMS ambulance corps, so they gave us a directive through the comm center, so they, they will respond to Wetmore under very limited circumstances. And, and those are that if, if there's a call down here, we have to call a second ambulance. Once that second ambulance is fully staffed, meaning a driver and a, and EMS personnel, whether they're a basic or ALS, once that second ambulance is staffed, then they will send an ambulance out of the district down here. But they will not leave the district until that second ambulance is staffed and ready to go.
Staffed and on premise?
On premise, ready to go.
At the ambulance barn.
And I can tell you that the chances of getting a second ambulance are slim to none, and slim as riding out of town. It does happen once in a while, but, so that is, that is where we are at in the comm center. That is why the, a week ago, we had the accident, or we had the incident right here at sixty-seven, I'm sorry, at sixty-seven and ninety-six. And we were only able to get one Wetmore fire individual to even answer their radio to come out. And so we, we landed flight for life in the highway with a person in the highway with one fireman. And I shared with the commissioners that the problem we have now is, is that flight for life may refuse to come because we can't even staff people to come out and, and ensure that the helicopter doesn't get hit in the highway. So not having, so having, and, and this is, I mean, this is a, a snowball effect. Can't get ambulance, can't get fire personnel respond. It's a tough, it's a tough situation.
Are they not paying anyone to be on call for a second?
Great question we'll ask this afternoon. The rumor mill probably doesn't get its nasty little tentacles this far down the hill, but I can tell you where I live, there's been a bombardment of accusations that Sheriff Byerly, myself, and the public health nurse, Alyssa Liebengood, are trying to take over the ambulance corps. That is not the case.
That's comical.
I have a third of a dog in this fight as a commissioner. I'm not happy with the way things are going, I don't believe these gentlemen are either. Not trying to single myself out, but I have been onslaughted with accusations that myself and two other individuals are trying to take over the ambulance corps.
Besides that, you don't wanna add an ambulance driver to your weed eating?
No, I much prefer weed eating and yard mowing under twelve inches. I don't mow anything over twelve inches, clogs it up. So just know, I think on behalf of the commissioners, we're trying, this is not gonna be an easy solution. People are gonna have some serious angst over this. I have no problem going to a judge to find an injunction to continue service in this area. I don't care who pays for it. This is not right morally and societally. We need to do something. Yes, sir?
Now, there's a short-term problem before you can put it on the ballot, obviously. It seems to me, if you wanna provide this service down here, and these folks seem to wanna pay for it, you put, you figure out what it's gonna cost, put it on, put it on the ballot as a milli issue for, for down, for outside this, and just go for it. And it seems to me, that's the smart thing.
And that's gonna be a complicated, difficult, and at best, a guess of what it's gonna cost.
If they don't know, if they don't know, I mean, they've spoken.
Yeah, right, go ahead.
Just have a quick question, you might not be able to answer it, but can we be in the ambulance district and not the hospital district?
Well, we don't have an ambulance district. Historically now, that's the, part of the problem is every, not everybody, but the people involved have decided historically that the hospital district is the ambulance district. I take exception to that. I don't think that was ever part of it.
I take just a little exception to that because I think it's a brand new phenomenon. I think now that Florence has said, we're not gonna service you, now it's a brand new issue. You know what? We're not gonna do it either, it's your problem, commissioners.
It might be, maybe I over-speak, but I've always felt like the ambulance corps was responsible for the hospital district. That didn't mean they never ran down here, but...
Couldn't you just, that, run a new ballot initiative for all citizens in Custer County that says that that ballot initiative that we're all referring to is all repealed, and a new ballot initiative that is X amount of mils for all citizens in Custer County for EMS services? initiative that is X amount of bills for all citizens in Custer County for EMS services?
That's something we're gonna discuss this afternoon.
Just clean it all up. No districts, no nothing.
It'd be Custer County.
Citizens.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know if that's possible.
I don't think that you guys can touch something like that, because it's their special district. They're gonna...
You have to go to voters.
The hospital district will have to prove it now.
Right, right.
Not the...
And they don't want to...
All over county.
They don't want to.
Why would the hospital district do that when they don't have...
Historically, the ambulance service...
Hold on just a second.
They're a special district, and so it's their baby.
These ballot initiatives I were reading were brought to the ballot by the hospital district, not by the county.
Sure, but you can't vote to repeal something without the hospital district being involved?
It's their district.
We looked at this with the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District.
Okay, yeah, I said I didn't know.
If you're gonna do away with a special tax district, the taxpayers in that district have to vote to do away with it.
Well, certainly, yeah. They can vote to vote.
It's a good...that's a discussion we can have, because that is an option. They can put it on the ballot and include it in the county.
But I would just like to say, the preliminary discussion we had with AMR, and I had to have my cards with me, was not for...I mean, we didn't...we didn't even discuss boundaries, except the boundary of Custer County. That was it. So...and then, and if that relieves us, the county of being...of any district or the county itself being in the ambulance business, that's an option we must pursue, and that's what we're doing. We're pursuing it. Whether it works out or not, time or town, but surrounding smaller counties use AMR, some of them, and it may be a solution for us.
For solutions.
And I'd just like to reiterate what Commissioner Flower said just a minute ago. This is not a power struggle. We don't care who runs the ambulance. I just wanna know that if you call 911 down here, that the dispatcher goes, "I have an ambulance on the way. Here's what you do in the meantime till we get there." That's all I care about, whether it's Custer County, AMR, or Man in the Moon does it. That's...this is not a power struggle. This is a human being issue that we must take on.
Okay, a couple more comments, if needed, and then we're gonna go into it.
Just a comment to what Jay just said. Not only that, if Nan picks up the phone, but if Jax picks up the phone, because we have serious problems up there as well with this ambulance service.
Frame the whole picture.
Yeah, and obviously, outside of law enforcement, you know, Cindy, Jax, both ran on that ambulance historically for years when it was under a different format than it is now. So, I just think this afternoon is gonna be interesting. To the best of our ability, we will allow everybody to have comment and input on this, as well as hear from the players themselves, hopefully, so, yes.
Let's use decorum.
All I really just wanted to mention is, historically, when EMS was formed, and correct me if you know anything different, it was formed as a county entity, and so the commissioners at that time didn't wanna...didn't want to control that portion of it, and so rather than...and there are several, I think, left of county ambulances. That's what it started as. And so, they decided that because it was medical, that it would go in along with the hospital or the medical clinic at that time, that they would help manage it. That doesn't mean they own it. It is a county entity.
If I can respond, flowers, because what you're saying makes perfectly good sense, but that was also at a time when emergencies, ambulance would bring the patient to the clinic. My understanding is now, the clinic absolutely refuses to accept any ambulance in that company.
Absolutely. I was a parent on an ambulance when that happened.
I am just absolutely flawed by that. If someone is having a medical emergency and they need respiration or whatever, and they go, "You go to Pueblo? We can't go a half a mile away to our clinic to get..."
And I was there. So, if I...if you wanna talk ownership, I believe it is ownership of the county, not of the hospital, or the clinic, or whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah, I agree. There is some language that assets were transferred to the hospital district. I think, as Commissioner Prince just said, probably the judge is gonna have to make that determination immediately. Appreciate your input. We're gonna take about a five-minute break here. I'd like to make it three minutes if we can. We've got two more agenda items, then we're gonna go into recess. We will not adjourn this meeting. We're gonna recess it until we get back to the courthouse in West Cliff for an executive session. So, we'll stand recess here for a few minutes. Might have been premature. Candace said he had to call somebody, so he might still be outside on the phone.
You'll be sitting in his chair?
Ooh! We're gonna look at Resolution 19-07, which has language in it to do away with kind of rescind our action before and then get us on a new track of how to split the money up. We'll talk about that, and then the other is an item that I put on. So, Commissioner Candace said he had to take a phone call. I'm assuming that's where he's...
Here he is.
Where he's still at. Yes, sir?
One thing that Stephen and I would like to discuss, a joint meeting between West Cliff, Silver Cliff, and the county commissioners to talk about our broadband strategy and so forth, and just if you guys are agreed to that, you know, that's one thing to do is just, you know, let Kathy or Eileen or Kelly organize a meeting. We're gonna look together if you guys are agreed to that, and do it quickly.
Yeah, we wanna...one of the things we've discussed, try and get together, and we were waiting for you, Paul. You wanted to have a meeting first before we could schedule with all the communities, and you've got that kinda straightened out. We can get together.
Yeah, I want a meeting first with us.
Yes.
And the purpose of that meeting, yeah, I'm sorry?
Is, you know, the objective is to bring fiber all the way into Custer County, West Cliff, Silver Cliff, and the county. That's the purpose of that. How do we get that done? There's evidently...Steve's been working with a couple of people. Been in touch with Bill, and we're kind of on the outside of that. Nobody's talked to us yet, but they've been calling a lot. So, that's just to get a common strategy so we're all on the same page and working together.
That's pursuant to a plan through the U.S. Department of Agriculture.
Yes, and Bill has some contacts and so on and so forth.
And we've talked...
But I think we go at it separately.
Okay. Would have to be in a workshop format for us to really do that, which would be open to phone, of course. I'm sure you don't have an issue with that. If you'd like to quickly look at a possible date, then we can have that discussion.
You know what? I'm not allowed to do that.
Okay.
Kelly could organize it, or Kathy or Eileen.
Somebody's gotta coordinate that.
Let's tend to look at July 22nd, which is a Tuesday. 23rd, sorry.
That's fine.
I'm just throwing it out, so everybody can look at the calendar.
I'm gone.
Okay.
Can you send the 25th, your mayor pro-tennis?
From 30th.
Ooh! I'm jealous.
How about August 1st or 2nd?
Sooner the better, because from what I understand, from a grant point of view, there's a dead sort of a...
Tell you what, you can have it. I'll phone in.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I'll phone in if we have it.
I don't know how soon we think we need to have it. August 1st, August 2nd?
Of course, 23rd. I'm happy to call. I'm just gonna visit my dog, happy to be where my family is also. Joke, but, yeah, I do that. But I'd be happy to call in and be part of the meeting, for sure. Be a part of it.
So, why can't you do the 23rd? You're not gonna be here, Steve.
I can do it.
Yeah, Steve said he was out of town.
I'm gone. I probably could call in.
Well...
I mean, I'm not certain this is...I think it's just a matter of understanding what's going on around us, number one, and number two, begin to develop a strategy for the three political selections that we represent.
That's expensive, and go forward. And if I could just add on to that, we also need to figure out what's going on with economic development broadband initiatives in light of the rest of this. I mean, because there's so much going on, and it seems to me like it's splintered in different areas, and I concur. We need to get a uniform approach to this app.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I guess right off the bat, Paul, I would say, if we really wanna figure out what's going on, then we gotta have the players at the table besides the five of us. I can't tell you what's going on with CenturyLink. I think I know, but it'd be irresponsible of me to say, "Well, this is what CenturyLink's doing. They're plowing fiber all over this county." I couldn't even begin to tell you the county roads are plowing probably today, so...
Fiber?
Is it fiber or copper?
No, no, fiber.
Fiber. They have a grant that they're working on.
I think we need to have some players involved too, which we have been, it just did not include you two, because we were dealing with CenturyLink and CDOT primarily. The county was. But I get that you wanna be at that table. I have no problem with that.
Absolutely. But I just don't know, I don't, you know, we're like on the outside looking in.
Right, right.
So, let me say something. I agree. Here's what I know, and the broadband project we do, we are doing with the towers, that's the issue, that needs to be fed by something, as well. And I know the plan right now is to feed it wirelessly, so that is a player, and we've got fiber coming into the counties, and that helps that effort too. But what we need to...when I talked with...remember, I went up and reported the CCI meeting and met with Sally Clark, who is the U.S. Government, the Department of Agriculture's Director for this amount of money that Silver Cliff's working with, pointed out that the better options are for the county to act as the county, with the municipalities, and it includes everybody. So, that's just from a fiber point of view. Then there's things that are going on. CenturyLink, Tom mentioned, is plowing in fiber because there's a grant that they've been working with to do that, and that's from West Cliff out to where the trees hit, mile marker five, basically, and into all that area to the north. So, that would play. So, I think, I like the idea that we need to understand first, the subsections that all come together. So, this block with Silver Cliff, West Cliff, and us is critical for us to understand what are the options they need to present, what the program would look like. We all need to understand the fiber into the municipalities, and I think you guys are looking at it as a utility, a service that you can provide to your residents in town, in local towns, potentially.
I don't know if that...
I don't know, but that's an option.
But somebody mentioned that. I don't know if we want a utility, but...
I don't either, and so that's why you need to understand what it all is, and so do we.
Interestingly enough, when we did Rosita Avenue a couple of years ago, at 6th and Rosita, where the Methodist Church is, we dug up a fiber cable that goes to the clinic...
Oh, yeah.
...to the county, to the school. I don't know how much broadband they have on, how much bandwidth they have on that cable. Nan claims it's bigger around, and I'm thinking WTF, you know? It's wide, you know? If they've got that, why aren't they distributing it?
CenturyLink is...
We're diverting a little from our agenda. I allow this, because we're gonna get to public comment sooner or later, and that's probably where this would've come up.
Right.
So, if you wanna work on a date, let's get to a date.
Let's get a date.
Right now, it looks like August 7th. We've...all three commissioners will be in town.
I think, from what I understand, from a U.S. Department of Agriculture point of view, we need to do it as soon as possible, because they're allocating the money they have now.
August...
The 23rd? July 23rd?
I threw that out initially, yes.
If you guys...
Commissioner Prince will not be here.
I'll call him.
He can phone in if that's...if you wanna pencil that in tentatively, we can start whittling down that as a date.
He'll be fine with me. There's only two people on...we have two people on the committee. I want her, and Bess Cole has a second. But even if she's not, I think that we're just trying to get a meeting of the minds as to what's going on, understand everything.
Okay, well, let's start with the three entities that you spoke of, and then eventually, I might invite Roden Bridge, because they know where they're plowing fiber, and I've looked at those applications, seven or eight of them, and I just didn't get the...I didn't ever write down the county roads they were plowing on. So, maybe I'll invite him as well, him being Roger Squire, because he's the one doing the apps. What time? Tentatively, everything's tentatively.
Anytime. On the 23rd, it's a Tuesday?
Yeah.
Wendy, can you do it, Steve, if you're calling in?
I'll call in whatever you tell me. I have no...
10 o'clock?
10? I'll just put it here, it's broadband meeting with Silver Cliff, West Cliff Commissioners, 10 o'clock, up at the West Cliff Town Hall.
Yeah, we know your date.
Tell what you got there, condition you're...
If you wanna call my cell phone, I'd appreciate it.
I mean, I can tell her, but I'm not gonna be back in the office till Monday, so...
23rd.
I could call her too, but I could just call her.
Okay, we're just scheduling the workshop. We're not trying to solve a broadband problem. We're just getting together.
Do we need a public notice on this?
We're gonna do that, yeah. That's why we need a...
The question is, how much do we...
Well, we're 24 hours.
24 hours.
I don't know about the two towns. I think you guys are different.
Okay.
So, we're just workshops, just 24 hours.
Okay, workshop.
All right, very good. Let's move on then, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You bet, you're welcome. So, the next item of this consideration of payment of concrete at the fairgrounds. I asked Eric to put this on here, give you kind of a quick rundown. The Fair Board has been trying to gather up some capital improvement funds, which they've done. They've got $38,000 that they have been diligently trying to put together an adequate amount of money to look at some capital improvements. There was a need of putting a concrete floor in the lamb barn, because the intent is to change the lamb barn to the indoor project building, and of course, that needed a concrete floor. This year's gonna be a lamb and goat barn, but probably this will be the last year of that. So, they went to some businesses in town and asked if they would consider donating material or time, and so the concrete people said, "Well, what do you want of concrete?" And they said, "Well, this and that out there," which was probably 60, 70 yards of concrete. And so, they said, "Well, we'll kinda do a 60 or 70-yard concrete price structure, and we'll go from there." And so, then somewhere along the line, I wasn't involved in this personally, they changed their mind, and now they only wanted 20 yards of concrete, but they expected it to be done for the same price and so on and so forth. Well, as it turned out, there were two companies involved. One of them donated all of the concrete, and the other company donated all the labor to place it, saw cut it, prep, move out the material, and so on and so forth, so...
Screed it out.
Yeah, yeah, place it and finish it. So, here's where I'm at. I'm all about volunteerism, but I'm also all about not raping our volunteers, because they're getting hard to find. And so, my point is, I would like to ask commissioners to consider covering part of the cost of that project. They had to use a horizontal pump to get that concrete in there. I did not ever get a price of what that was, but without that horizontal pumping, we're looking at about $9,000 that these two companies have donated, and I personally, when they never intended that, that wasn't the intention. I think the intention was between the two companies, they thought they were gonna donate a couple thousand bucks. Well, these guys are stand-up. They're not gonna...and they did not come to me. Nobody's come to me and said, "You gotta do something about this, my God." They did...that did not happen. I looked into this, and I realized that kinda the quantity and the amount of time and so on and so forth was involved, I thought, "Well, I'm gonna look into it." So, I asked those companies to give me the prices, and they did. I didn't think it'd be that high either.
So, they both were doing it, or one doing it?
Both donated all of it. I'm asking the commissioners to consider maybe... Both donated all of it. I'm asking the commissioners to consider maybe...
One labor, one concrete?
Yeah, basically, that's how it went. Materials was one company, and the labor to do it all was the other company. Included some equipment, skid steers and all that.
You want to reimburse to both some amount?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. It's almost charitable giving. They're not expecting it. They didn't ask for it. Personally, I would look at it as community outreach on our part to say, "Hey, we appreciate your spirit of giving, but we also recognize you probably got tipped to the cleaners on a deal because it was way, ended up being way bigger than they ever agreed to."
What, Tom, how many square feet of that, you're right?
Uh, 40 by 60. That lamb barn, maybe 60 by 60. I don't know exactly. I just know it was 20 yards.
It cost about 20 grand.
So, I could read. I could reverse calculate that and come up with square footage. But it was, right now, without that horizontal pump, it was nine grand. I'd like to see us consider maybe trying to cover half of that split between the two companies. With that being said, I'm the first one to recognize and admit that the Fair Board has money in their capital improvement fund, but I also know that the labor pains they've gone through over the last six or seven years to try to get that money put in there for capital improvement. If the Fair Board had to make the decision, either we pay for it out of a capital improvement or we leave it dirt, they'd have probably chose to leave it dirt. That's how committed they are to their capital improvement fund. Yes, sir.
Is the suggestion that we take $9,000 out of capital improvement a budget?
No, sir.
Okay, that's where I'm trying to get.
Uh, I guess if you ask me, I would say I would like to consider maybe four grand, 4,000, and take it out of community outreach, not our capital improvement either.
If I can give you my thoughts on this. First of all, we have some wonderful people, one of them sitting right here, who make continuous donations to help this community. And I really appreciate, I know what you do, and I sincerely appreciate, and these two companies are doing too. And I sit there and I think to myself, anytime I give away a dollar, I'm giving away tax dollars, so I have to be very, very cautious and judicious on what I'm doing. Out of my pocket, I could be a philanthropist, but should I be a philanthropist with community tax money? And here's why I'm in favor of this project or this suggestion, because they have donated this, they have, I don't want to sour them to the point where the next time we need a project, they turn around and say, "You know..." I don't want to do it because it's just, you've come to the well one too many times, and I'm just saying no. And I know in my little business, I get that every single day. A school kid walks in, I've never, ever said no, but I always think when they walk out, you know, I've given away more money than I made this week. So, that's what we have community outreach for, but I have to remember where that money came from, tax dollars. So, my feeling is, I think this would put a good flavor in these two companies' mouths. So, the next time they go, they're going to say, "Will you help us?" They're not going with, "Oh, I got cheated the last time." I cheated. I made a bad deal last time, and I think this would be the upstanding, correct thing for the county to do. So, I'm in favor.
Well, it benefits the taxpayer in that their kids are growing and have value.
Well, it's not that the companies are going to get it. I mean, it is a public...
It is a public one.
But you have to remember, both these outstanding companies said, "I'm not helping you ask them for money. We're giving them money that they're not even asking for." So, this is different than having a bill to pay. This is, all we do, what is the right moral thing for this county to do? And we have to look at it in terms of, it's tax dollars we're giving them. So, is this the right thing to do? I'm in favor because of the ramifications down the road.
You know, in October, we put money into that fund, Community Outreach. I don't want to deliberately use the word discretionary spending, but we put that money in there so that if events and circumstances arose, we'd have the flexibility to do that. Yes, sir.
Two things. So, if they used 20 yards of concrete, last I knew, concrete's running about 200 bucks a yard now. It's four grand right there, just for the concrete.
They're quoting.
And I know that Beach donated all that concrete for the steer barn here two years ago, and that was never bid at 10 to 15 yards of concrete, I would say. And then lastly, having sat on the Fair Board for 18 years, I mean, the commissioners are ultimately responsible for the fairgrounds. They have to track it. So, it is kind of an investment in your own...
It is, yes.
No, with that, he put the concrete for the scoreboard, man, too.
Yeah, they're big, they're big community donors. I think Jay, how many times you go to the well before they cap it off?
Yeah, I went into this thinking, we're probably into that concrete 120 a yard. The construction company came back and said that was 150 a yard. So, I'm not asking that we maybe pay for all of it, but anything would help. Yes, Paul?
Is that, is that building, is that building Mercedes?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's the best building out there.
Yeah.
Actually, it's the most...
It's on the foundation or...
It's on piers. It's a metal building, open sided steel building, I beam columns.
I know, interesting.
No, I'm sorry. I was thinking sail ring. The lamb barn is the second newest building out there, and that is a steel roofed building, wood framed, on a foundation, yes. It's not the steer barn.
It's four inches or six inches?
Uh, they ended up a little over four inches.
Right.
Because they knew we were never going to drive it.
I'll donate the remash for that.
Uh, that, see, the job's been done. It's poured, yes, yes. But see, right. To Jay's point, man, that's exactly why, see, yeah.
Right out of your mouth, like even knowing the project, go, "I'm willing to donate." I mean, Paul, I know what to tell you, okay?
All right, I move, we allocate $4,000 out of the Community Outreach Fund to offer that back to the two companies.
I second the motion.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're moving seconded to, $4,000 out of Community Outreach, split between the two companies that were involved. If you guys want to know, those were Beach Ready Mix and Oakley Construction.
Paul?
Oakleys, yes. And so, I would probably, anyway, we'll get to the discussion. Further discussion. Go ahead, sir, sorry.
I just want to make sure that we have the money in the budget.
We do.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yep, good point. And I would ask if Meredith would, if this motion passes with the assumption that we'd get a voucher in the process, that's all.
You still got time?
Yeah, Oakley and Beach Ready Mix. Beach Ready Mix and Oakley Standard Stone Construction. Further discussion, public comment? During no proceed vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nate. Carries. Last item of business, Resolution 19-07. Let's entertain a motion and, or do you want to take the lead, counsel, whatever you think's appropriate?
I just wanted to explain what the purpose of this is.
Okay.
On July 3, we adopted Resolution Number 19-06, which was to sell the 11 acres to Mr. and Mrs. Burton for $1,000 per acre. That resolution...
Per lot.
Pardon?
Per lot, not per...
I'm sorry, $1,000.
The lot is where, Clint?
It's in the Golden Arrow Valley subdivision. And that was approved. We received the $11,000, but that resolution said that money would be earmarked for the Justice Center Fund. And Virginia Trujillo called my attention after that, that that was an inappropriate use of that money. That the county acquired this property through a tax lien. The property owners at one time or another did not pay the taxes on it. The property was put up for sale, or the tax liens were put up for sale. Nobody purchased the tax lien, so by default, ownership of those lots vested in the county. And as she pointed out in the statute 39-11-145 Colorado Revue statutes, that any money that's received from the subsequent sale of real estate that was put up through a tax lien, the way this happened, that money has to be divided up among various taxing entities in the county, and that's all of the special districts, fire protection district, hospital district, all the others. And so, this resolution that I prepared here, 19-07, says that everything about 19-06 is fine as is, we're just changing that one part of it, that this money would go to the treasurer to be dispersed among the taxing entities. Now, Virginia had another question because she wasn't sure about the county, the validity of the ownership of the county, but I explained to her, we did this by deed of county, which is essentially a quick lien deed. We were selling the land with the interest that we had, but she really wanted some, an ownership and encumbrance report, so I took it upon myself to go arrange to have that done. I haven't received it yet. It's a $70 expenditure, if necessary, I'll pay for that if there's any question about it. But I, she seemed to want to make sure, find out if there's any other claim of ownership on this land lingering. I can't imagine after over 30 years, but as soon as I get that, I'll share it with you. But I think this resolution will take care of the main issue, which was that the money should go to the taxing entities and not into the Justice Center Fund.
And then, what I understand, the last paragraph says that whatever we had left goes to the Justice Center.
Yeah, I guess our portion's still, that's going to still stand forth. So, our portion of it would go to...
Would go to the Justice.
Be earmarked for the Justice Center. It's a great point.
Right, and I'd support you there.
Uh, I did a little research. I didn't do all the research myself, but I looked at some of the results of the research. This tax lien attempt happened in 1963, so it's been a while. And the other thing I thought was interesting here now, and well be within the realm of our due process, that Section 39-11-145 says that the net proceeds of the sale of such real estate should be paid to the treasurer. We had expenses in conducting the sale of this property. Not significant, but we had some.
Well, the $70 was after the fact.
Right, but the county's already had expenses.
Well, the, I'm not sure what expenses. We sent out notice to the adjoining property owners, to anybody?
Uh, yeah, you know, I may have misspoken. Maybe we didn't, the other land, we did put paper...
We had the land we provided title insurance for.
And, right, and I thought we had notice in the paper, but we may not have on this.
I don't think we did. I think we just sent out to the other property owners. So, our expenses were minimal.
Yeah, so I retract that because I was thinking we had paid for advertising to get this property on the sale of it. So, yeah, postage to send out's, like you say, negligible, so I'm fine with that. Uh, group's pleasure?
So, are we looking for a motion to accept this?
To adopt this resolution.
Yeah, I believe we adopt Resolution Number 19-7 as a ready.
Okay. I'll second that motion.
I've got a copy here to be signed.
Yeah, I've, anyway. We're moving seconded to adopt Resolution 19-07, a resolution of Custer County, political subdivision state of Colorado, amending a portion of Resolution 19-06. Further discussion, gentlemen?
Discussion?
Yes.
Even though our counselor is so overpaid already, I really want him to put an expense account to reimburse for any out-of-pocket expenses you have in this. That's $70 you do not need. This is a county expense, in my opinion, or any other expenses you may have car doing this.
Well, I thought about all this while I was on my motorcycle trip.
Yeah, so the $70 was for the O E.
Eight hundred dollar hotel.
And she said that, her name was Gwen, and that if it was possible, they may have to do more than one, but she didn't think, so she'd let me know before she did that. So, 70 is all we're looking for.
Whatever the expense is, $40 that Danny reimbursed.
Yeah, and we...
Danny oil.
If it does become 140 or 180 or 210, we can still deduct that and just report the net proceeds.
That's right, and we reimburse the council.
Yeah. Uh, okay, I've got a little bit of discussion here. Want to share with you. Oh, my gosh. So, this $11,000 is going to get split 17 ways. And I want to read...
I was wondering what Shannon was going to do with his windfall.
Actually, it's 16 because the contingency fund is not part of this. So, I'll just go through this list. C1 General Fund, now this is based on $11,000 sale of this property. So, that's what, the check was written to county for 11,000. So, C1, the General Fund, that's a school, $3,700, round them off. County General, 1,800. County Public Welfare, 125. Emergency Services Fund, 337. RE2J Bond, 55. RE2 General Fund, 88. Roden Bridge, 834. Round Mountain Water and Sanitation, 71. Rye Fire District, 79. School Bond Levy Fund, 964. Self Insurance Fund, 250. Town of Silvercliff, they're going to get their chunk, they're already gone, 40 bucks.
They're outspending.
That they're outspending. Town of West Cliff, 93. Upper Arkansas Water Conservation District, 79. Hospital District, 1,220. Library District, 307. Wet Mountain Fire Protection, 905. That's at the $11,000 mark. If the net proceeds were less, these figures all changed. That, those percentages are based on, believe it or not, their budget amount. So, they take the budget amount and then do a percentage of that and come up with the final distributed, distributed amount to go. So, originally, we thought it was county land, we sold it, we put the proceeds in, $11,000 goes towards Justice Center land, not 1,800 bucks.
How do you know why the county kept it for so many years?
Right.
It kind of makes sense and a good point, doesn't it?
Yeah, it really does. I mean, I'm surprised, we're not paying, for crying out loud. But, you know, we're the second highest distributed category there. Frustrating. Further discussion, public comment? During no proceed vote on the adoption of Resolution 19-07, I'm prepared to say aye.
Aye.
Vote nate. Carries.
We're going to continue the meeting later.
Uh, that is correct. Yes, sir?
We can do public comment.
We're moving into public comment as soon as I can get my, at the end of the bar. Yeah, public comment.
So, I'd like to just update you guys on a few things that have been ongoing or whatnot. Just to let you know, we had another dispatcher resign, effective, gave two weeks to the day. So, he'll be done on, well, it's 10 days left or nine days left, and then that individual's leaving.
Uh, this is not the one that just finished training.
No.
This is another one.
Yes, sir. So, our comp center woes just continue to build and build and build. Went to a meeting in Trinidad yesterday with CenturyLink, gal from the 911 Resource Center, and then a gentleman from the State 911 Commission that's been formed through the legislature, or as he nets was called. I might be lying if I can tell you what the whole acronym means, but it's, essentially what it is, is that CenturyLink has decided that they're going to completely upgrade all of their 911 system away from analog to digital. And oh, by the way, it's going to cost us a bunch of money. And we are scheduled to have that improvement done in August of 2020. They showed up unannounced and gave us an assessment of what all we have to do and be ready for them to do their upgrade. It is going to cost us roughly, I don't have the firm, firm numbers on it, but roughly $40,000. We're going to have to have increased, we're going to have to have increased power into our building, going to have to add another rack, several upgrades to our brand new 911 system. It's going to have to happen because fortunately, our new 911 system is capable of handling it. It just, all the switches aren't turned on. And so, of course, it costs 10 grands, 10, over 10 grand a pop to turn the switches on, I guess. I don't... I don't understand. It's, there are some added equipment, but anyways, so, that's, we're going to have to formulate that into the comm center budget for next year, because it's going to have to be done, um, in order for this to happen, because the old analog system we're using right now will no longer function, so they have us overbear. And, uh, there was lengthy discussion yesterday that was, and, I mean, it wasn't just us, people from San Luis Valley, Alamosa, everybody were down there.
Not happy.
A lot of frustrations, because they're just men, another unfunded mandate coming from, from either legislature or from Century Link, and Century Link knows they have everybody over the red hill, because you don't have to.
You've got to be down.
Century, only, only game of tennis. So, uh, just thought to pass that great news on to you.
Two, I was just calculating, I wasn't ignoring you, I was running some numbers while you were speaking. We have desperately tried to find some revenue streams, some money to help support this Justice Center effort, and then things like this come along.
Right.
And bite us right in the behind, and we're, we're coming online now with our AT&amp;T lease, with that contract, Sheriff Byerly, I want you to know, that we've already received a payment, which totally surprised me. Now, I'm thinking sixteen hundred dollars a month times twelve, that's what I was calculating, nineteen grand, doesn't even get as close to where you'd be in a year from now.
Okay, um, I'll just keep going on, so we did get a, we were notified by the state, we got a seventeen thousand dollar grant for the black and, black and gray marijuana, that state money that comes from sales of marijuana into law enforcement, which goes directly to pay for the expenses that we incurred in trying to keep as much illegal marijuana out of the county as possible. So, we did, we did get that, that's positive. As you probably noticed, if you've been around the sheriff's office at all, which you have, because you've been at the county building, so you're seeing our fence project is coming along quite nicely, shit, I'm expecting all of the fencing to be pretty much up today, with the exception of the gate. On Monday, they'll come in and dig the line for the gate, for power for the gate, uh, they'll dig that in, at least get the condo and everything set.
Is that part of the contract, that digging?
Yeah, yeah, so that's all covered, that, and all of that's being paid for on a grant from Homeland Security, because, uh, that fence is mandated by statute that we have that in, so, I don't know, they put the building in in ninety-six, so I figured it was about time, we probably would have met the statute on that. Our Conex project, you have for extra stores at the sheriff's office, you've probably noticed, that's come along quite nicely as well. Big thanks to Mike Halpin, who basically spearheaded that, I believe Tom helped with some welding, but Mike's been the one that, that really made that happen, has been the key person for that. Disappointed Paul left, because once we got that started, it didn't take Town West Cliff to about forty-five seconds to be over there to remind me that I had to come down and get permit to do all of that, so, I'm still, I haven't been down there yet, but I will, I will get down after that.
Thank you, Liz.
And cut the grass by either.
To, to, to make, uh, that first net tower, so, you've noticed the work going on on it, um, they should have, they should have, um, I talked to the guy that's kind of spearheading, but he's not the man, the project manager, so he was, I think, a little more candid with me than anybody from AT&amp;T will be, but, uh, he said the tower and the fence should be up, um, here in probably another four weeks or so, they should be done with that, and we should expect for that tower to be online sometime twenty, late twenty twenty to twenty-one. So, he said that's been the timing with the rest of them, so.
Which was originally.
Because all, because none of, none of the fiber optics there yet.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, they did pull fiber to that side itself, but.
So, I don't know, maybe, maybe he was just like, yeah, don't expect, don't expect it to work for a while, but.
And we were told that it would be completed and functional.
Uh, last Friday, right? That's when it was supposed to be done.
In the second quarter.
Yeah. Yeah. Lastly, just a question, I was told earlier this week, so are you aware of the, were Frank Oberlin's, the steel buildings?
Yes.
So, you're aware of what's going in there?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Are you?
His rep, basically.
I wasn't until.
They sent us a letter about a month ago.
So, they could start processing C B D oil.
They closed on it yesterday.
Yeah.
Um, it's the Hayes', it's Kathy Hayes', one of the owners, they're going to, um, process hemp.
C B D oil.
Hemp plants, and making it to hemp oil. They'll be selling most of it, some of it, they may actually make their own product. In fact, I have some of it on my exhibit at the moment, and it works well.
Well, I, I was told that, so they're processing and all that, but those are going to be no sales, there'll be no sales tax generated from it.
Well.
I, I don't know if that's, I'm just saying, again, this is all brand-new news to me.
I would say the presentation they made at Silver Cliff, they claim that there will be some, they anticipate at some point some retail sales from that, but they also anticipate hiring several local people to help with this process, so it will benefit Silver Cliff at least in that.
Are they going to, do they have a security plan in place, or they're just going to rely on my office to, if they have retail sales, and that's a huge target?
That's a very fair question, I don't know the answer.
Okay.
Um, they did contact us as courtesy, because obviously, it's not in the county.
Yeah, right, right, right.
But, uh, you raise a flag of concern over the sale of C B E oil, is that correct?
Well, I mean, it's not against the law, it's, but, but, I mean, that's.
What if it was an ice cream shop?
What about security-wise, I mean, because C B E oil's expensive.
Right.
I mean, I, I've never bought any, but I hear it's, I mean, high-dollar stuff.
Yeah.
Or why would they be in business with it?
Right.
What about security, are they going to?
Hey, here's what I, I can do help a little bit here, and I thought this lady sent a call, this Kathy Hayes apparently knows me from Northern Grumman when I was in the Air Force, but she says, hi, she says, we're looking at buying the form of critical path that'll work building Silver Cliff, Jay Frantz may have mentioned this to you, we would use the building to process the biomass hemp plants to extract C B D for manufacture of consumer products, we will continue working with Jay on the purchase, and are talking with Roger Camper for zoning, and Kit Shai for cop, fire code compliance, he hasn't talked to you. We want to make sure there are no barriers to operating our business for the finalization of the.
Was it Jay?
Just to me, yeah, because I, I thought it was to all of us, just because she knew me from.
I mean, I, I wouldn't expect them to go through me, I mean, I'm not part of that process, I, I just raised the question, they're going to do retail.
And just FYI, I did bring it up twice.
Yeah, you did.
The commissioners to mention that they were doing that, do we see any barriers? Before I told them, you know, the county itself has no issues.
Right.
But really, Silver Cliff has to be, so, there won't be any retail sales immediately, that I know for sure.
Okay.
They're hoping someday they might, but I think that's like any other retail sale, every business.
I'm assuming they're going to get a permit for that, right?
Just retail.
Retail sale. So, at that point, then, I would think it goes through the process, to say, what's your security plan, or whatever.
Okay.
But it's a good point, I hadn't thought about that, because I thought, we don't have jurisdiction over.
Yeah, I just had not heard it, so, heard any of that, so.
But I forget, really, the county would have jurisdiction over anything, because we were expected to provide law enforcement, right?
Well, that means town contracts with us for law enforcement, so.
So, really, it's through them, or through our sheriff, good point.
They have a place in, they live in Mackenzie.
Police services for the other half processing plant in the county, I, I thought it was off Schofield Road from a positive temporary, there's another outfit in town, in the area, I don't know, I don't see town, that processes C B D oil.
That's not aware of.
Well, I think there is, but it's.
No, there is definitely a second.
It's north of town.
Yeah, it's in the county.
I mean, we can get into it if you want, I don't know.
Nah, it's, I just, no, it's.
We can talk about it, but.
Yes, I was, I was.
Anything else, sir?
No, sir, that was all.
Uh, public comment, any other public comment? I was hoping somebody volunteered to buy lunch in Florence today, but apparently, that's not happening, so, uh, I will.
Roof spray shop.
Oh, that's where we're going, okay, perfect, and everybody knows where.
Where we going?
We're going to Ruth's House. Uh, this meeting will stand in recess until, we hope, approximately four o'clock in the courthouse. We're going to try to end the workshop this afternoon at three-thirty.
And that's workshop.
Okay, ma'am. B O C C meeting will reconvene, let the record show, debate is July seventeenth, twenty nineteen, the time is four twenty-three P M. According to my agenda, we conducted all the business that we had, anything else, gentlemen? No. Commissioner Frantz?
Yes, sir.
So, I would move that we postpone our executive session until council is present. If we need to call a special meeting, I don't have an issue with that, or if we want to wait, uh, till our next regularly scheduled meeting.
I would rather do the next regular meeting.
Next regular meeting.
Thirty-first, yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so, uh, I would include that in my motion, and postpone until July thirty-one. All in favor? Well, I thought we had a second, maybe we didn't.
A second?
He did, just now he did.
All right, postpone's not debatable, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nate, motion carries, so we'll postpone till the thirty-first, okay?
I'll move that, will you, sir?
Second, been moved and second adjourned, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, please note.
All right.
You bet.